Evening everyone. And welcome to another meeting of the Eastern City Council. This is a special meeting. Items that were on Monday's meeting. For us to be able to look over tonight and discuss and then of course. And of course have action. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me back there Paul? Can you hear me? Alright, perfect. Alright then, before we get started Pastor Hurden, I saw you out there. Come on up please and lead us in prayer.
Thank you sir.
Let us bow for a word of prayer. God of grace, God of mercy and God of kindness. Once again, we bow before thy presence with thankful and grateful hearts. Thankful for the fact that you allowed us to see another day. We're thankful for life, health and for strength. Lord, as we go into these proceedings on this evening. We pray for your holy presence to be in this room and to. Grant leadership and guidance to those who will be in the decision-making capacity on this day. We ask Lord that as we go forward that. The decisions that will be made will be for the entire benefit of the citizens of this congenial community. So blessed now we ask our council, our mayor and all of those that share in the mantle of leadership. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right, your pledge of allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, broke off please.
Councilmember Shaw.
Make sure you speak up. You just.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Chisholm.
Here.
Councilmember Watley.
Present.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Mayor Protim Howard.
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Wimberly.
Here.
Alright, moving right into approval of the agenda.
So good, Mr. Chair.
Would you properly support any discussion?
Um, yes.
Yes, Councilwoman Wiley.
Uh, yeah, I have a, uh, before we get started to know this, I have a. Legal question. I have been trying to get asked, answered. For weeks now, reference the legality or validity of continuing processing. Applications while there's a moratorium in effect.
Okay.
And I would like our attorney to let us know if, uh. If this is something valid or the city's open to liabilities because if we keep processing these. And they get to the end and they're still not allowed a license, won't the city be in some sort of jeopardy or liability?
There, there are, those are arguments that any applicant or disgruntled failed applicant could make. They could bring a number of legal theories and I think it'd be in the best interest for me to give. Give them assistance in what claim they may or may not have at that time. It's my understanding though that when the city voted on the moratorium, the applications that are now present before us. Happened while that moratorium was not in effect. But I don't know that to be factually accurate, but that's what my understanding was.
Okay, there was one day. In between the old moratorium going off. And the new one, one business day where work could actually be done. And, uh. But still, once that happened, the moratorium, moratorium was in effect. So I'm having difficulty understanding what a moratorium is if business continues as usual.
Well, I think. If we did not have a moratorium in effect. And then it became an effect after the fact and we didn't process those applicants that applied without the moratorium. They would have a stronger case if we stopped. If, if they were indeed, if they had indeed applied before the moratorium was in effect. Now, we can ask the building department, whoever accepted it, when they received. I don't know when they received.
So there's no definitive on the legality of us continuing to process during a moratorium?
Well, the definitive nature happens when there's a judgment. If, if, if people take the matter to trial and a judge or jury rules in one way or other, that becomes the law. You know, the city passed the moratorium, so we wouldn't process and that, that's what the language was. We weren't accepting any more applications, correct me if I'm wrong. Madam Clerk, wasn't that what the moratorium was? We would not accept any more applications during the period of the moratorium and I will still.
Just, just, just for the record, Madam Clerk, when he asks you a question, say yes or no. Or ask the, answer the question, don't nod because we have people that's looking on, online as well. So the question was, ask the question again please and speak up.
Was, wasn't it correct that when the moratorium was voted on by this council, it was that we would not accept any applications during that period?
Yes.
Okay, and just for the point of clarification. The moratorium was up for so many days, we know it was during the holiday, but for one business day. As you stated, Councilwoman Wiley. And then applications came in through the process, through the clerk's office, is that correct, city clerk?
Yes.
And you accepted those applications?
Yes.
And are those applicants, the applicants that we're dealing with today?
I know once specifically, I would have to review my files to know if there's any more in there.
So that day, we had six applications coming?
No, these, no.
These were already in the queue?
If I may, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So no definitive answer, reference.
Mr. Chair.
The legalities.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Shaw.
I know in the, in the packet, McKenna said in their memorandum. That there were existing a 12-day period where the moratorium had lapsed. And the city was obligated to accept applications. But it doesn't give us a number. It just says that. There was a 12-day lapse. So was these. Think, I would want to know as well, was these in that pipeline in that 12-day lapse according to. What was in the packet? So I don't know if they can speak to the number. Because they, they may mention that it was a 12-day lapse. So we did have a moratorium set. That we issued, I think that was January 3rd. For a moratorium and then January 20th. Of next year is when it's, it would be up. But they may mention within our packet that. It was a 12-day lapse, so I don't know if they have the number. Of these or are these the applicants within the presentation tonight? That was in the pipeline, so we would know that those were the ones we'd be obligated to accept applications.
Can you answer that, Mark?
Yeah, uh, can you hear me or do you need to stand up?
We can hear you.
Okay, uh, hi, nice to meet you. I'm Mara, I'm from Chisholm, the name's Robert Menchis, my title is James. Could be here, everyone makes a pact, now so get back to your question. So we.
Mara, Mara, if you could just approach the podium and speak into the mic please, thank you.
Hello.
Okay.
Okay, so we drafted this memorandum to help clarify some policy or the policy around marijuana because it seems like we needed some clarity. Um, so we took minutes from the city council meeting. And to understand when the moratorium happened. So we got these numbers from December 21st, 2020 to January 3rd, 2022. We received these numbers from city council minutes on January 3rd, 2022. That's what the footnote is on the first page, when we received this data. And then the 12-days lapse, we counted 12-days from December 21st to January 3rd. So that's why we said there's a 12-day lapse. Granted, that is during the holiday season, so I understand that perspective.
City council was closed, the city hall was closed, there was only one day in that stretch where we were doing business.
So that, that's where we need the number that was in the pipeline. And if that is so, uh, were these the ones that's on the. Agenda tonight?
Go ahead, please.
During the time that the moratorium had lapsed. These all were not included, these, most of these were in the pipeline. I do recognize one address that came in during the, while it was lapsed. On those 12-days, I recognize one address, but I can't say that most of these. Were already in our pipeline. So if. I have the understanding that this meeting was about who was in the pipeline. Then I would have been more prepared to tell you exactly what addresses. But it's my understanding when you, special land use permits.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm just saying, we, we do need to know that because like they may mention, you know, um. Those are the ones who we obligated to take part in, am I correct?
Yeah, um, you are correct if I'm understanding that correctly. Um, in order for us to move forward with the planning process, we receive a pass, a pass letter, a pass letter from the office of the clerk. And in order for the office of the clerk to issue a pass letter, that means that the marijuana applicants or all applicants would have to be considered from. The clerk's chapter 124 business licensing criteria, perform their background checks and also accepted within that moratorium lapse. I understand that some of them were in the pipeline before that, so not everyone jumped to apply around Christmas season, but, um. Yeah, that's what I'm getting from. So in order for them to move forward with the planning process, we have to receive. The, um, the pass letter, the verification letter from the clerk, which authorizes the first step.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm.
No, sure, go ahead.
But with that being said. Did it, did it show a number on the pass letter or it just signed off on? Whoever.
Uh, an address? Right.
There's not a, it's for each individual project that comes through, uh, that we receive a pass letter. Not all of those projects have an associated address when they go to the clerk's office. So that requires us to check LLCs with the applicant and who's holding the license. Uh, the clerk then does that background work and ensures us that they'll, they've already applied for their license and done the due diligence within the proper window. So they can move forward with the special land use request with planning.
I mean, yeah, that, I mean, that's, you know. I don't, I don't want to beat this up, anything like that, but I just want to make sure that the people who. Have applied, I know that there's a whole process, but we want to make sure that all that's. That has went through that process in that lapse time because we did have a moratorium. So in that process of time, that these are exactly the folks that has the pass. That been signed off on, that is on, on the agenda tonight to be. Considered. So, you know, that's, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Yes, no?
You want to take a recess so that I could see which ones? I know for a fact that there were no more than three that came through and one was rescinded. Because I don't memorize the address. It's only one that I can recognize the address.
Okay.
But the rest of them were in the system. For a while.
Okay.
Before I came aboard and have received their pass letters, but had not. Um, been serviced through planning for whatever reason.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead, Councilwoman West.
I kind of want, so I just wanted to clarify, so you said there was only one application that came in during the day lapse?
No, it's only one on this list that I recognize the address that came in during the. Lapse of the moratorium.
So you have a record of that, of who came in during that time?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you guys want to recess and research it? With your pleasure.
You can take a recess to do that. I mean, I'll be in favor of that, I mean, you know.
Not necessarily. What's your question?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Wiley.
Yes, since there's been very little continuity in any of this, uh, process. Is there some way to find out, did we during our last moratorium, because it was a year long too? Were any applications processed during that time?
To my knowledge, not for retail. And that's when the moratorium was on. To my knowledge, no.
So these people, even though they've been in the queue for quite some time, so they were in when the last one was on, they still weren't processed during that time. But they are allowed to be processed during this one.
But she don't know.
May I?
Yeah, please.
No, there were. Applications in the pipeline prior to the first moratorium.
Mm-hmm.
Um. The moratorium was on and during my time in that moratorium, there were no applications accepted. For the adult retail.
Okay, we're, we're understanding that acceptance, we're talking about the actual processing of said applications. Because that's different than accepting the application.
Well, once it's accepted, I believe it should be processed.
But you said you had them in the queue, so they had been accepted, but they weren't processed.
And processed in the clerk's office. They had not been processed in planning.
Okay, just for, bottom line, I'm totally confused, okay?
Yeah, and I think there's tactics to actually do that and confuse the process, so let me just make sure that I'm clear on this and understanding what. Everyone is saying, because we know that when the application comes in from marijuana, they go to the clerk's office, correct?
Correct.
So then you do your due diligence as it relates to all of the measures that need to be checked before they even go to the planning department?
Correct.
Okay, and then from the planning department, you all look at, of course, what's going on as it relates to any. Stipulations by the council that's been set and then you say, okay. Like the moratorium, for instance, you say, okay, yeah, we can process these applications, is that correct?
Well, planning books that is zoning ordinance.
Okay, so you don't even look at that, you just look at, once she tells you or the clerk tells you, here you are, these are passed. Then that's when you start putting them through the planning department?
Yes.
And then from there, you take them and push them before the lady commission, yeah?
Well, we work with the applicants, nature of the site plan is best for the community and also provides by the state ordinance and then also have recommendations for special land uses. And out of those projects that benefit the community and add check, how it might be, so we do some work, you see? And then we go to the planning commission and then see how it goes.
Okay, alright, so out of these six applicants. How many came in during the time of the moratorium, the moratorium was lifted, do we have that answer?
That's, yeah, that's what I'm.
That's the, the question that we're looking for and the applicants are sitting right here. So I mean, do I need to refer to the applicants?
Well, we could take the recess.
Hold on one second. Hold on one second, I, hold on one second. David?
Do you, your, your question is should you refer to the applicants?
At this point, I'm, because.
No, I, I wouldn't do that. I, I think that from what I heard the clerk saying. And from what I gathered from member Watley. There were some already in process before the second moratorium. When that period lapsed, those began to be processed as well as what it sounds like one that came in during that period.
Okay.
I can guarantee that had we not processed the ones that were already in effect, that had not been moved on in quite a bit of time. We would be facing legal action for not processing the ones that were already in existence, so. If you recall, I, I do recall that. I believe our office counseled against. Moratoriums for an extended period of time because you opened yourself up to litigation. But because of the nature of what we're dealing with, you're going to be up open to litigation either way. But it sounds like, and correct me if I'm wrong, moratorium was in effect the first time, applications were received but not processed. When it was lifted. We then filed after 12-days another moratorium. But we still had those other ones, there was a period of time where we started processing, where we had accepted those ones that were in. And prior, I don't know if that was three, four, I don't know, how many was it that we had not been doing anything with? And then there was just one, based on what I'm hearing tonight, that came in during that period. The bottom line is that council votes, four votes do anything council wants to, to. Pass or accept or reject an application move forward. So if it's council's intent to support the thing with their moratorium. Um. Look at the applications that were received after, the ones that received and, and vote. You know, there was a, there was an intent behind the moratorium. We're going to face consequences one way or the other, what, no matter what we do tonight or in the future.
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead, Councilwoman Chisholm.
I did, uh, I had heard a couple of my colleagues saying yes about taking a recess to review the information. But before we, I guess, consider that, two things, uh, one of the things that city attorney had just said about his office did advise against a moratorium. I remember that one vividly because I challenged his colleague on that. Because they talked about the extended amount of time and I said, well, we put a moratorium in for five years on used car lots, B lots. And nobody, you know, and we've moved forward with that. Because the city or our residents, I'm sorry, had said they were tired of used car lots, they wanted new ones and we spoke for the people. Um, and then we did impose that one and we moved forward and we were good. So I just wanted to piggyback on that, but I wanted to ask a question because I know that, um, when you're talking to the city clerk. Talked about the application process, I just wanted to ask, when does the pre-app process come into play through the planning department? Is that before it hits the clerk's office or is it after it hits the clerk's office when an applicant comes in?
When you say the pre-app, what do you?
Yeah, like most businesses, when they come to the city to apply, for instance, I'm going to use, um, it was A and B liquidation. When they came into the city, they just bought a building in the TCD and opened up shop. Um, the lady vet Brock was here and she went in there because they told us when. I believe former Mayor Protim, Tim Williams had been challenging their legality and being in the TCD. And they had been sent like two or three cease and desist orders because they didn't meet the vision of the master plan and they continued to operate. Then they decided to go through the process, which was fill out the pre-app. That failed and then they continued to pay all their money and city council at the time, which I wasn't on. Or they voted him down because it didn't meet the vision of the TCD. Well, they ended up picking up and they left and they went to Dearborn Heights and opened up shop. Now, we know for a fact. Just because of the manpower and things like that they have in other communities, they had to go through the process all the way. Um, appropriately and not disrespect them coming to that community like they did us. And so we stood our ground and this council was right, or that council at the time was right in the action that they took. But had they filled out, I believe, the pre-application, it would have told them they can't go in there because they weren't in that area because they weren't zoned. And he was already a business owner, so he, he did business outside the state already and he came in to Inkster and did what he did. So I was just asking about that pre-app because I do remember conversations about that in the past, but I didn't hear, you know, anything discussed. So I was just asking, when does that pop in? Is it before the clerk's office or after the clerk's office?
Go ahead.
Actually. The clerk's office does check the zoning. We. We examine the application for completeness. We examine the property ownership, the, the. The partnerships or how their organization is set up. And we just actually look for the completeness and the. Permissions to be in the space that they're requesting to be in. After that, we send it off to the police department for the real vetting of the individuals that are involved. And once the police department says yea or nay. Um, from the perspective that they look at the application, then we give a pass letter to the. To the applicant. Considering all those conditions are met.
So, so is it, just from what I'm gathering, is the pre-app portion combined with the clerk's office now? Is there still a pre-app step in the, in the planning department before it hits the clerk's office or after or?
That may be an effect for your normal businesses, but wait, the. The ordinance is set up for marijuana businesses, marijuana establishments. It's that the clerk's office gets the vetting.
Okay.
Initial vetting.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. So back to you, Councilman Chisholm, you said you heard a couple of your colleagues say they wanted to recess, it's a motion. So this is.
I make a motion that we go into recess to review the dates for the said. Uh, marijuana applications on this special meeting agenda. Or hold on, I'm sorry, we were in discussion for the, for the agenda.
Yeah.
We can make, I can make a motion to, for that, or do we need to come out of the discussion for the agenda first?
You have to come out of the discussion.
Come out of the discussion, okay. Okay.
Either you can.
I got it. So as it relates to the agenda tonight, all the favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have a motion carried, okay, Councilman Chisholm?
Alright, I make a motion that we go into recess so that the information required earlier can be reviewed for this body.
There's four. Any discussion? Here none, how much time do you need clerk to gather that information for us?
Um, I can't estimate. Uh, let's start with 30 minutes.
30?
You're asking for.
I gave you 10, I gave you 10. Alright, let's go into session, yeah, let me talk to you. No, we, we didn't, we didn't call to vote. All, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Alright. Come on.
He's not available, it's Jim Gorman, so he's not here yet.
Yeah, I know, but he's left on his stuff with Jay.
Didn't have a case, but I have to pay him.
How that I'm, I'm. Your position is that it's like the fact that somebody can't have a moratorium process meeting?
Well, your first option, so all you need is four loads to. And the reason for existing moratorium?
But what I don't want to do is publicly, you know, the mercury's saying, oh yes, we will not be going to do anything because we have. We're turning it on.
I feel like that everybody's flexing, you know?
Exactly. Even though. He gonna be lost.
Yeah, I'll get you, we can be a couple.
I don't think he will. He didn't give it because he didn't know what's going to happen. All of them got racist finishes on that. I thought they would have a folder. That they just go for their folder with that address or that applicant on it.
Me.
Because I'm not supposed to think.
No, because they don't do, they don't do shit right. You see what I'm saying, for the record, I am totally confused. So the last time you didn't process while there was a moratorium, but this time it's okay to do it. Let's be consistent.
I think they is, but, um. Are you sure?
No, we got, uh, 10 things on that. Me too.
I don't know, maybe. We need to do something. Man, my thing, yeah. Yeah, we need to talk about that. Get up and meet, we're going to talk about, uh, put some things in place in the future because we can't just keep on. Because the moratorium, the moratorium is, is.
Because the moratorium, the moratorium is off.
No, it's on until you can...
See, all these are the ones that made...
Now, these people, these people could have been in the pipeline or could have came in in the twelve weeks.
Yeah, I know.
I think what she wanted to do is probably get an understanding, clarification. And this, um, like, uh, hilarity today, you know? Says only good to check, why not? Says safe, better than never, right?
This is all language that I have. And he didn't say recognition. Yeah, and this. He officiated.
Wouldn't it work if they come to earth? So she should have...
She has to say that she said, she haven't said.
But she go back there and let the application go. There ain't a lot of data on it, dated on it, right? They dated on the application, so we'll wait. They got new water back there. Can't go ask the clerk.
Joke my daddy like a ten.
Yes, that's a little old.
You know, my question would be... Could I ask for the dates? You could ask for this. Yeah, I just wasn't trying to say that later, just second. I was just kind of wondering, and the package is how come the dates wouldn't come in? I don't know what's... I guess he must take the numbers down then.
Hey, how you doing?
Hey, friend, how you doing?
See, my thing is, I fight the thing that I know I can win, you know what I mean? I been through all that. I went down there and I talked, I talked, I talked with some of my buddy friends trying to find out what can I do here, most of them anyway. But like they said, you know, it's, uh, it's, um, special land use, okay? So you gotta wait to get down to the following, buy the samples and put the guidelines how you want it, you understand? Because I questioned that one at the gas station. I questioned that one like mad dog. I wanna know how he gonna take that hill and come down there and put the driveway in there and put two or three, um, you know, rental spots in there.
Call up there, did you call up there too? Okay, because they said somebody had just called and I called up there and asked them, they like walks.
Oh, I got that.
No, I mean, they're like, well, they were like, oh, yeah, somebody called for a Michigan back. I said, was it the young lady? They said, yeah. I said, I guess that was her. So the lady that answered the phone, she didn't say, well, call back to check with man or we gotta check the lost balance. She just... Come up there? Oh, so they found it?
Yes.
Oh, she just went tell them, yeah, no, that's fine. Oh, no, 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 no. I thought she was playing like, she didn't say yes and no, we found it. She just said a young lady called up here for it. So I just wanted to make sure, um, you probably was calling at the same time I was calling. When I first called, the line was busy. And then I called like right after you had taken off. But you already called.
I called, I called my first.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, you know, they called and our line was busy and then you got off the phone and I called and it went through. I just wanted to make sure. It would happen. Well, if they can't find the dates, then everybody in trouble. Because all that stuff's supposed to be dated, all that stuff's supposed to be dated and processed. Because truth, I don't know how it works, but if they dated something, they gave a pass letter.
They know.
The planning and clerk's office should have those dates. Yeah, because they should have a letter too.
I mean, that's a waste of time right now. I think, I think it's a little wrong.
I initially, for the planning commission, we don't have an ordinance on that. And when you get one to come in, and they all come in. Party, that's already been worked on. You can't stop them though, but they already, they already in. Because we have a ordinance that's in process for smoking lounges right now. I started it through the planning commission.
Somebody to hook them up?
Yes. No, so what... What happened when they came in, at that planning commission meeting, we talked about a smoking ordinance because I had already pulled the draft from Dearborn Heights.
Something about that to me.
No, they changed it. We're supposed to start working on it. I forget where it's at. Because I already know it's another business on already told. And I was like, really? And I was like, you know, we didn't...
That's what we need to deal with, man. That thing we need to deal with.
The ordinance is gonna have to be, uh, public and everything on that. Then it's gotta, uh, you know, it's gonna come out of, uh, by the planning. Then it's come to city council for a first and second review.
This year, I don't think we win it, but we need to put something in place where can't nobody else come in here.
All right.
We need, we need to put a limit on it, anything, that's it.
Somebody, somebody ask about that.
Well, we need to. They put some language. Right now, we don't have no language. I talked with heavy lawyers about all this.
I don't know, we don't ever, we never get... But we talked about social equity because that was when, uh, micro businesses came into place. When the micro business came into place, people talking about social equity.
Only one went back to them because all these things, all the ones in conflict is in my district.
Right.
So I went to all of them. I said, don't even bring it forward. I don't care where you at, I'm gonna kill it. I act crazy. I said, I ain't killing this, you gonna put some, you gonna put some additional buildings to it. We need, we need, uh, bad food, we need movie joints, we need all this council coming down to it. So that's why you see how we got...
That's the one in Michigan that's been retired shop. He's not in there, but I just admitted I'm from there.
I said, oh, God, I don't know he is. And then I, I asked about him, see, that's what I asked about this, you know? You know, he sound on the eat with a great house, doing new building there.
But, oh, no, no, no. That's six two zero one, that's, that's, that's the little bar we did the food drive at by police station.
That's what he, that's what he trying to do.
Why is he trying to put another? Why is he, go ask him. Why is he trying to put another pair of malls right here?
Yeah, that's the one we did the food drive. So that's that location. That's the other way out.
He gonna keep running, uh, Sky Bow. He pull the blue Sky Bow back down to the little place, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so what he, what he...
But I didn't say that, when once that move, that location's going to come, it's like, it's gonna happen.
I heard something different.
That's, that's intent. I don't know, I can't confirm because I ain't, uh, you know, applicant or nothing, but that's what I heard. I heard that too.
See, that's why he want that. What he wanna do is just build him down there.
Yeah, that's the one at your shelf. That's the one at your shelf. That's here. That's the one right here. If you wanted to put, uh...
Yeah.
But like if it's for this... We have to put on that. Like when you have... Special reasons, special land use.
I gotta talk. I talked with some heavy lawyers all week. I was trying to figure out, I was trying to figure out what kind of, but I did, I got one call. I got one call. I, I can, I can deny. Somebody else take a question all over. Uh, pre-qualified, right. Where do they down clerk, I mean secretary? Secretary, lawyer, do you say you're gonna school be a lawyer? Write it down, ask them to see.
Clerk, right here, you were wrong.
They ain't gonna win though, once we get about two. We can't win.
We say what?
Only relegated to M word, so.
And that's that little, it used to be like some side place. Everything was saying, you're hearing different areas, you can be there as a B to a B grade, your T C D and stuff like that. He said.
Hey, I've seen all real feed and rest of third day like that.
How you doing, give out with your check? That's why, that's why we leave. Yeah, girl. Because we have too many, we're gonna have to have more than two cities. How how many? Don't see. How many people they been came to? At the time, before. So those, that's why, it's probably for well. This will make some weight, by talent, so that's. To crush those, it's the system, yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, that's why it's gonna go.
Turn back on your mics, Councilman Moilis.
Councilman Chizel.
All right, motion to come out of recess.
Make a motion that we come out of recess, or.
Move to properly support, any discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, all right, ayes, I have a motion carried. All right, before we get off into the agenda, we had a question on the floor as relates to the timeline uh for the applications that came in or were here. So let's see, clerk, have you had information out, please, go through it, please, come on, please.
So, I believe understood that the question was how many were not. So for item B one four 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 Inster Road, that came in new during the moratorium, um during the lapse of the moratorium. Two six two zero one Michigan Avenue had been in our system since two thousand and nineteen. Item E two nine two two five, two nine two four five Michigan Avenue came in during the lapse of the moratorium. Item F two nine seven zero nine Michigan Avenue came in during the lapse of the moratorium. Item G. Two nine eight nine nine Michigan Avenue was in our system uh before the moratorium as a micro business. And during the lapse, it amended it to um recreational dispensary. Item H. Three zero 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 seven Michigan Avenue was also in our pipeline as a micro business and during the lapse in the moratorium, they switched to recreation adult use dispensary.
All right, that covers them all, questions?
Yes, could we get the date? Could we get the date? She said it came in during the lapse, what's that date on the?
On which one?
All of them, because they couldn't only come in that one day, because that was the only lapse, so I need the date.
No, give her the date.
Well, I don't have the date on all of them, but it was twelve days that it was actually a lapse.
No, it wasn't.
It was during our vacation, but there were a couple of days.
These weren't even open.
So, they came in on Monday the third, January the third, so you want to speak for me, you want to speak for them, I need you to speak up. I can't answer the question and then you answer the question, so answer the question, is it January the third?
January third.
So all of these came in on that one day, okay.
So rather all of these.
No, the the ones that were already in the queue, I understand those, but I'm interested in the ones that came in during the one day where there was no moratorium.
Right, so the number is what, three?
That's somewhere like four or five.
It's like, so it was three? Because one or two were converted, so you have one that was there already, that had been in the been in the catcher since two thousand and nineteen, right?
Yes.
All right, and then you have one, you had a two, it looks like those are the two at the bottom. You had two at the bottom that were micro businesses, right? That changed theirs from the micro business, a rec license, correct? And then so the other three, so you would have had three.
Three.
That actually came in new on January the third. So let's just make sure we getting this all clear, so you have one that had been in since twenty nineteen, basically, on Michigan Avenue, right?
Item D, right?
That would have been a rec, did you?
All right.
Item G is two thousand and nineteen.
So let's let's just start from the top again, so Verna, item B came in on January the third, correct?
Correct.
All right, let's write that down, so we're all on the same page, January third came new. Going down to item D, when did that come in and what was it?
That was in two thousand and nineteen.
Two thousand and nineteen that came in. Two thousand and nineteen, all right?
You move, you know, too fast.
All right, I'm gonna slow, let me slow it down, all right then, going back to item B.
Okay, item B.
Came in on January the third as a new applicant, doing the lifting of the moratorium.
It's twenty twenty or twenty nineteen?
Night, uh, January the third, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, sorry, twenty twenty two. Okay. All right, item D came in in uh twenty nineteen.
Was item C.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry. Item C is not one, so guys, please, just let me, let's let's stay on course, okay?
I see it, I see it.
So I'm sorry, item B, so item C is a actual, is something else that we're dealing with, item D came in in twenty nineteen. Okay? Item E, which is a mental clerk.
That's one three.
So that came in January the third, twenty twenty two, as a new application during the time the moratorium was lifted.
January the what?
January the third.
Twenty twenty two.
Twenty twenty two. Item F.
January third.
January third, twenty twenty two. Item G.
Was already in as a micro.
So was in as a micro business.
Which there was no moratorium on.
So there was no moratorium on the micro business at all, so they were in the process and then of course probably when they heard that the moratorium lifted, they put their application and changed their application and amended their application to adult use. So. All right. And then item H.
Item H was also a micro business in the system.
Micro business that did the same thing.
And um one three, they amended.
And there was no moratorium on the micro business, the micro business just could just go through the process, so when the moratorium lifted, they did the same thing and applied for adult use. Now David, speak to what's ultimately happening as we talked about.
Bas- based on my understanding of the applicants and the proposed addresses, um while being processed, they still have to adhere to certain zoning requirements that the city is implementing. City has several requirements on any zoning within a thousand feet from another light facility, so many feet from a school, et cetera, et cetera. A lot of these applicants are right next to each other, so they're gonna have to deal with the requirements of the zoning. So it's very probable that whoever gets their C O O first, you know, is gonna be the one that's prohibited. If these other applicants are within that zoning requirement, it prohibits from opening, they're not gonna be able to get a certificate of occupancy. But that's that owner's problem, that's not a city problem, these zoning requirements are in effect and have been in effect, so they they proceed at their own risk. Not all six or five or however many they are, if they're within those prohibited zones, will be operating.
So, this chair. Look like it's like four within that.
So it's, okay, that's four, that's all the ones on Michigan Avenue, right?
For the most part, correct.
Not not all the ones?
That is Michigan Avenue. Well, I'm sorry, sir, you're out of order, and I am the chair, so I do understand what's going on, so I got you. So yeah, they're all within a thousand feet of each other.
So what, those are the ones I would like to to know and to note is the one.
Yeah, so let's just, let's just go ahead and and note them, so. Let's see here, one four four Inster Road is not within that, within that thousand feet buffer, because there's no existing.
So it's not, you said it's not?
No, because there's no existing uh business that's there concurrently. All right? D, the one that came in twenty nineteen is not either, that's basically right behind us on Michigan Avenue, right here for the most part. Sits in between pretty much everything outside of a thousand feet, the rest of the applicants are all within a thousand feet of each other. So the first person that gets their app, that basically the first person that gets their certificate of occupancy within this area knocks out everybody else. So person zoning quote code is is written currently from my, this is for special land use that we're saying from the planning commission and their recommendation to move them forward in the process. So this is all still the process, this is just part, this is a step in the process for them to carry on in the process. This is not, you're saying they're gonna go here, like if we vote today, they're going here today, no.
It's it's just a race to the finish, that's.
Exactly, I mean, that's basically. Person person zoning is is written today. All right.
Mr. Chair?
Please, be approached.
Okay, now, I know we do have buffers, so if we have a thousand, whatever the buffers are.
Thousand feet.
And we trying to put three within a half a mile of each other, so somebody is not gonna get it.
Correct.
So why would we take the application if we knowing that that's all, that's that's our buffers?
Because the city, so so basically, the the ordinance has some gray areas, right? So in the gray area, which we. So in the gray area, which we need to tighten up as a community, understanding that we know that now, right? We didn't put in there. Uh an application, a pre, uh like I say, a a pre applicant or pre approval. We didn't put that in there. So we basically said existing. So it's non-existent in this area. So everybody came in at the same time in this area. So we have to accept it. Cause there's nothing that exists there that permits them not to apply. And we would say, no, I'm not gonna take your application. Then it's like, oh, well, nothing exists there, then you're setting yourself up for litigation.
Okay.
Alright. Any other questions from this body before we get off into the agenda? We do have some presentations and I know that the floor is. Is gonna be open for some discussion. Alright, alright, let's move right along then. Move the agenda presentation public hearing. Send agenda. I'm looking at the wrong, I'm sorry guys. Alright, approval of the new business. Go ahead, city clerk, jump into it, please.
Item A is to consider approval of special land use. For a proposed hookah lounge in the B two thoroughfare mixed use district. At three sixty four Inster Road with the conditions outlined in the planner's. July eighteen, two thousand and twenty two review letter.
What's your pleasure? It's item A. It's it's item A, three six four. It's the old um. What is that? Side pocket. The old side pocket. The old cap and demos on Inster Road. And it's in your packet. All the information is in your packet. Alright. What's your pleasure?
Yeah, so move, Mr. Chair.
Is it support? Alright, discussion.
Discussion.
Alright, you wanna start Mara or you wanna start Mr. Chair? I mean, you're about to call the planning commission chair right now, you jumping.
I was just, I guess if Mara, if you approach, um if you could just give us a status on the ordinance for smoking lounges as well.
Okay, um. So hi again, thanks for having me. It's nice to meet you. I've never met you yet, uh Mayor Proten. Thank you. Uh I'm Mara, I'm running the planning department here. I started in March. So thank you also for having me today. My co- my coworker colleague is Jane Dixon. And yeah, just wanna say thanks for engaging in some process improvements, creating some flow charts here and we also have. Drafted a memo on special land use and the processes, the process for a special land use. Did you guys get this memo yesterday? At the meeting? Okay.
Yeah, it was given to everybody. I think Mayor Proton probably.
Oh, okay, I'm, we'll we'll create another copy. Um and I think we might have one. Okay, so the way the zoning ordinance works in many and all communities per Michigan state law is to. Review a site plan by its set of requirements and then also a special land use by its own set of requirements. And the set of requirements for the city of Inster is like any other community. We've got a total of nine different requirements that we assess a project based off of. Um and we compare. What will we look at what the requirements are in the zoning ordinance? These little requirements are listed one through nine on this memo. And then that's how we base our findings of fact if we support the project or not. So we support this project that's three six four Inster. Um the applicant presented their site plan and special land use request to create a hookah lounge. At three six four Inster Road at the July twenty fifth, twenty twenty two planning commission meeting. Planning commission at that meeting approved the site plan and also approved recommendation of approval to. Um city council for their special land use. And the reason why we are discussing it as a special land use is because it is a smoke smoking lounge. And smoking lounges are special land uses within the city because we see these items as more sensitive projects. And we wanna have a little bit more discretion over them in the planning process. So um Chair, uh Chair, I say Chair, from Planning Commission, Councilmember Steve, or Councilmember Chisholm, my bad. Um asked us about the smoking lounge ordinance. So the office of the mayor authorized the planning department to draft a smoking lounge ordinance. And um this entails some design standards, what we can and cannot do, um uses that we can and cannot have. Nearby a smoking lounge and where we would like to see smoking lounges in the zoning ordinance. So we have passed the smoking lounge ordinance in planning commission and now it waits on the city attorney's desk to. Put it into a final draft for city council to review. So if you want a status update, we'd have to ask the city attorney for that. But we can move forward to the project at hand. So the project at hand is three six four Inster. It's formerly the Fatouche House Middle Eastern Cuisine Restaurant. And as I said, the site plan is approved with conditions. We also have some conditions of approval for the special land use. Um we're reoccupying a vacant three thousand nine hundred square foot building. And the planning commission, the planning department letter is, which is attached in your packet. Finds based off of the the nine review, um the nine standards for special land use review. That the project meets the special land use criteria and the planning department recommends approval with the conditions listed in the staff review.
And they're gonna also have a restaurant there too, right? Or some type of carryout food place?
Yeah, it'll be a smaller restaurant, a small restaurant.
Okay, come on, Washington. And make sure you speak it up into the mic, ma'am.
Okay, you hear me. Okay, so um with the ordinance I know you just stated, um for the hookah lounges that are coming, cause that was one of my concerns. Um in regards to ordinance, making sure that we don't have that situation of these hookah lounges. Now, I know over in that area, there is a daycare.
Right now, we don't, maybe um. Councilmember Chisholm, you might wanna speak a little more to this, but right now, we don't have a policy to um. To review or to process uh hookah lounges. That's why this project triggered the city to draft this hookah lounge ordinance. So while we are accepting this applicant and this applicant is here today to represent their project, we are also simultaneously. Creating smoking lounge ordinance, which the planning department has created and drafted, planning commission has drafted. And now it's up to the city attorney to move it forward with formal ordinance language for city council to review.
Okay, so that's where we can add it to that on.
Exactly. Yeah.
Yeah, please.
I was just wondering, why would we take on a applicant for something that we don't have anything on the books for? And we haven't seen it.
So lots of cities do this because.
I mean, not lots of cities, I'm just asking.
Well, let's just say by law, though.
Right, by law.
Yeah, so they put in the application, you have.
Right, but we don't have any anything on the books as far as this ordinance. And then we seeing, well, I'm seeing this ordinance today because I've been sick.
We're not asking you to hold on an ordinance?
I'm I'm not, I'm not seeing that. I'm not seeing that. But what I'm seeing is that I would. It's gotta go to the city attorney, then come to us. But we're gonna have been voted on this prior to this. So if it's something in this ordinance that. We're not in grievance with, it's too late, correct?
So let me, let me, let me just give you an example. In two thousand nineteen, there was a special meeting had in November. November the fifth, two thousand nineteen, where the former council, right? Adopted us into the adult use marijuana program. Because we didn't have an ordinance in place, operators were able to operate. And do adult use without us being able to regulate. So that triggered us to actually have to do something, which that's what we're doing now. So that's the same thing that's happening with this because uh we don't have anything on the books. Hookah lounges just can pretty much open up under the, pretty much the guise of. Our bar lounge. And we can't necessarily say, no, we can't have you because we don't have anything to regulate them.
Okay, but as far as.
Now, we're trying to do that now, but it's basically the, I would, I would defer to the attorney so we can all be on the same page.
Because as far as, I do know it's a daycare center over there. We don't even have like how many feet.
Yeah, but hookahs. Hook is probably the, probably the most regulated thing.
Oh, yeah, I must say, I'm, yeah, I do know that.
Hook, I don't know.
Okay, well, I I go ahead.
Can you talk to that David, just?
I can say much better than you said, Mayor. Uh one of the things with regard to. The hookah lounge, it's it's a business who will be paying taxes that we don't otherwise have.
Right.
And people who own property have a right to do most anything and probably as long as it's legal with their property. And what we don't want is them to just start opening up and doing what they want and because we don't have an ordinance, we can't regulate.
And that's why we're, it's triggered us to do this because the applicant came to us.
We will have to, obviously, we'll have public hearing on the ordinance, public can weigh in on the ordinance, council can weigh in on it. And you know, decide what parameters we want around uh 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 use such as this.
But we couldn't hold them, the current applicant hostage, if you will, to that because of what David just said. We had to move them through the process.
Okay.
Any other questions about this item?
Just wanna clarify one thing.
Please, go ahead, ma'am.
Uh the attorney just said that we're now getting taxes from this. If this person owns this building, will maybe get taxes whether there was a hookah lounge there or not?
Uh I mean, yeah, of course. I think that goes with the vacant. Properties in the city of Inster that we need to occupy. But as relates to the quality of the area and the value of the area.
No, just, it just seemed to me he was saying that we get taxes, we get taxes regardless. So that's a non issue. That's all I'm saying.
I can agree with that. Okay, anything else? You none on favorite signature, say aye? Aye. Any nays?
Nay.
Mayor Proten Howard.
Nay.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington. Councilmember Watley.
Nay.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes. Alright, motion carries. Alright, motion carries. Next item, please, ma'am.
Item B is to consider approval of two special land use permits for a proposed. Adult use marijuana retail establishment and marijuana provisioning center. In the B two thoroughfare mixed use district at one four 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 Inster Road.
My question is, why is it two? Land uses versus one?
Um applicants are allowed to apply for both an adult use retail license. And also a medical provisioning center license.
Okay, alright, so that should just be said on there, okay? Cause provisioning center is a provisioning center.
Yeah, it's medical. Uh so it's, it's kind of com- it's, it's a tricky world. I had to learn a lot about terminology of marijuana businesses, Chair. Um but. You would see this, so there's two buckets for marijuana. There's either recreation or medical. And recreation is considered an adult use retailer and then medical is considered a provisioning center. We do not use the word dispensary. Dispensary is not used in in marijuana law. It's either a recreational center or a provisioning center.
Alright.
A re- marijuana retailer or provisioning center.
Alright, go ahead, Mara.
Okay, so on June twenty seventh, twenty twenty two, the planning commission reviewed and recommended approval for the special land use. For both the adult use retail and medical marijuana provisioning center at one four four Inster. Um the applicant seeks to reoccupy the existing building at this parcel. It's a existing eight hundred fifty one square foot building. This planning report has, um planning departments reviewed the project. And reviewed all of the criteria for special land use and finds that the project meets the special land use criteria with. Um some conditions. The applicant is here to speak to represent their project if you wish.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Congressman Washington.
Um I'm looking at this uh map right here. And it's not giving me a estimate of how close. It look like it's pretty close to neighborhoods and homes. Do you know how close it is to these homes that I'm looking at?
I know that there's a buffer, uh a tree buffer between the residential community and Inster Road. And this property is right off of Inster Road. I don't know the proximity between residential homes and this use. But that's why we're, we're having discussion today about special land use. And we, the planning department reviewed this project and we see that the B two district, so there's different um. Commercial districts as we're all familiar with. There's the B one, which has more sensitive residential only commercial uses. And the B two, which gets a little bit more moderate, it's the second tier, and B three has more of a regional commercial use. So the B two is more moderate uses. And due to the fact that this property, uh the building is only eight hundred fifty one square feet. So the footprint of this business is going to be very small. So due to the the relative um small size of the business. And since it is along Inster Road, a major corridor, we find that. The use would not be intensive and would not restrict, uh would not uh be a negative impact on the adjacent. Um residential zone.
Well, it's, it's my district, so I I know where this is here. Now, I thought that she, it was a lady that was supposed to do a daycare center.
It never happened. We wait, believe me, I'm every day. In businesses along and and especially along our major corridors. We got code enforcement on them every day. I'm out there every day. When I see activity, I pull up on it. And uh this person's been talking about doing the daycare there for five years. They own the property, the property looks terrible.
It is terrible. I mean, you know, it got spray paint and stuff on it.
They're, they're on our radar. So they ain't doing nothing over there.
But she, she, I mean, she, she's not doing anything, but she is obligated to 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 maintain that building if she owns it.
Oh, no doubt about that. And believe me, I mean, we taking it in for sure. Where's the applicant?
How you doing, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, good. You guys have any questions, Brad?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question in reference to uh. Councilwoman Washington's.
Okay.
Now, there is a. A um footage from occupied buildings. I know that, so I can't remember exactly what it is, but there is a certain. You're supposed to be away from because one other applicant wanted us to. And because he was nine hundred and seventy six feet from it, he wanted us just to give him the other twenty four feet.
Yeah.
But it states a specific, so she doesn't have that information, how far away it is from. That residential?
Well, it's close.
Residential is not an issue, I don't believe. Or go ahead, Mara.
Yeah, Chair, so I'll only speak when you want me to. Okay, um so, yeah, I'll direct you. Okay, so um. The, as the mayor, I have my ordinance out here, but as the ordinance is written, the buffer, the thousand foot buffer is only. Based off of drug free zones and what the ordinance defines as currently right now, as ordinance defines a drug free zone. Is a school, um a park, a church, anything within that nature. I can read off the. The definition of drug free zone if you wish, but the the definitive, definition of drug free zone does not contain residential district.
So there's nothing to protect the citizens in a way of a buffer from these buildings. There's nothing written down anywhere, cause I was certain we had a footage required.
Not for, I think for the, for the cultivating centers, you had it. It was for the cultivating. You got, you got a couple of things going on. So cultivating centers for sure, you had the three hundred feet. So that's what we were talking, that's what you were talking about, the two seventy five to the twenty five. Um as it relates to the retail spaces, I I haven't ever seen anything in the ordinance written that way. But that's something that we can do. So I understand this, as we're going through this, this is a learning curve for the country. This is not just for the city of Inster. So. That's the stuff that we have to talk about, you know? Do, do we need to put in certain provisions in order to protect?
Then, then as long as we're doing this today, I would like someone to explain to me how these. Are harmonious with our master plan. On each one of them, how did it become harmonious? I'm gonna ask this question as each application comes up.
Okay.
Because I don't see anywhere in the master plan where it says glut the city with marijuana facilities.
Well, I think that's not the, that's not the intent, it's the business. Well, I think that's not the, that's not the intent, it's the business.
Well, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, show me how it's harmonious. And out of one side of your mouth, you say that it's harmonious with the master plan. And out the other side, you say the master plan is outdated and should be revised. So which part is harmonious?
Go ahead, Mara.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Um, so cities don't specify marijuana within their master plans. They can have concepts like, um, like drug-free zone or something like that. But what we've seen in our work with McKenna, cities don't call out like where they wanna see marijuana or not. That's something that the zoning ordinance does. And when we say that, we're, we're here trying to, uh, have a conversation with both sides of the argument, like weigh the pros and cons of this business, of this project to the zoning ordinance. And we're really using the zoning ordinance as our guiding framework and also the master plan. And so we're here, and Pappy pointed that out, Councilwoman Watley, we're here saying that the, the master plan is actually outdated. Um, and city administration needs to, we are taking action on, um, presenting a, a, a relevant master plan. But this is one criteria with a special land use framework. Um, and if we read the first paragraph, do you want me to read it out loud?
None necessary.
Okay.
I think you, it, as it relates to her question, um, just as it relates to being harmonious, what does that mean?
So I can agree with you that a special land use review versus a site plan review, um, are, they're different. So special land use review is a little bit more subjective and that's why we can have these conversations. Harmonious, I can reverse the question to you and say, what does harmonious mean to you? So we are here to say, uh, we're gonna try to understand what harmonious means for the project and the master plan. And this is our best effort that we put forward, but really it is a subjective conversation. A site plan review, on the other hand, is an objective conversation 'cause we've got strict standards in the zoning ordinance and it's easier to follow because we've, you know, we've got numbers, dimensions, criteria, use, so that's specific. Here we're having a conversation, what does it mean to us? For example, we said that, um, this area is the corridor convenience. So your area, the B two district, represents a corridor convenience retail which permits daily services and goods to be readily available for the community. Um, so these permitted uses include offices, um, hard- hardware stores, drugstores, smaller uses, but, um, still more moderate community uses. And if we say, in the second paragraph, we considered perhaps that, uh, adult-use retailer and, um, with men, marijuana provisioning center have similar components to a pharmacy or drugstore. They have, since it's eight hundred fifty square feet, it's similar in square footage. That's when we compare it and say, yes, we think it is harmonious to the master plan. But we, like I said, it's subjective, we can have a conversation, which we are having today.
Does that answer your question or?
No, but that's okay, I'm used to it.
Okay. All right, we try, we wanna get to, we wanna answer the question.
I understand completely, but this is so convoluted.
Yeah.
And so, like she said, subjective.
Yeah, and that's up to us to let's play the body.
You can't ask me to make a decision that my constituents are saying, you know, no, 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 without having a, uh, a more concrete base to, uh, uh, assess. But like I said, all of these, like improvement to the community in which way? Harmonia with the exi- harmony with the existing character in what way? Adequate servicing facilities, how so? Um, smoke, kings, glare, noise, we know we'd have a problem with odor, right? In these facilities, so.
From the retail spaces, but the cultivating, for sure.
You know, we've had complaints about the, about the retails too. And no one has ever given us any information on how these air scrubbers work or what they actually do. And at what, at what rate do they assess the air quality that's coming out of these? You know, like with the noise from the airplanes, we had the people come out and say, okay, this is this, this is this. How do we go about that so we can protect our citizens?
Yeah.
You know, so what's the level that is acceptable? And if you have five or six in an area, that's five or six times the acceptable level. So these are just questions I'm asking, 'cause I'm trying to get an understanding on this. One other thing, it says too, that it excessive or additional cost to public services. That is something you can concrete, okay? That does not have to be subjective. 'Cause anytime anything new comes into the community, it's going to add to the already burdened resources we have. It can't help but do it. And, uh.
You say resources as you relates to?
Like we're talking about police and fire and, you know, DPW, the roads and things of that nature. So, and we know that for a fact because we had the same problem with the flower bowl up there on Michigan Avenue. That did not add to our resources with all that traffic that we were experiencing. People having problems getting past Michigan Avenue and things like that, that didn't add?
Oh, we alleviated that right away. We told them they had to, we had to shut down.
Oh, I still, I still run into it. I still run into it. There's still, at certain times of day, there's tons of cars. And they, they, so I'm just saying that this is, if these are the things that we're supposed to utilize to make our decision and you only need one to vote no, well, I think I've listed about five. So that's it. You all don't have to, you know, address anything else.
I love that question. Um, this is, uh, for business regards, but because I'm not sure if this is close in proximity to the home neighborhood. Um, is there like modi- like, will there be modified hours of operation because of that?
Go ahead, please.
Okay, um, so, yeah, I can answer both questions too. But chapter one twenty-four of the zone, of the, um, the city's code of ordinances, the business licensing section, um, it regulates hours of operation for all marijuana businesses in every district. So those hours of operation are listed on page five of your packet. Um, and that is to regulate the, like, sensitive nature of the, the business.
So was that yes?
Yes, there's modified hours of operation.
Oh, right.
Five.
Five.
That's a packet. And we actually recommended to, um, increase, well, uh, to increase the restriction of the hours of operation due to this being, uh, used with close proximity to residential district. As you can see, there's two rows. Are you on page five?
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
Okay, so there's one row that says chapter one twenty-five hours of operation. That's the, what the ordinance requires.
From ninety to nineteen will be usual.
Exactly.
Hours. And then the recommended hours, because of the proximity, would be close at six, door and off.
Exactly.
Business hours, okay, good, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
That's, uh, a condition that the planning department drafted.
Oh, right.
Um, and then Mayor, do you want me to address?
Yes, please.
Up, uh, special use seven? Okay, so again, this is subjective, Councilwoman Watley. Um, but marijuana uses provide their own security. Um, and they also provide their own security cameras. And they're required to link up to this, the, uh, the police department. So that's another reason of how we assess that it would not be a burden on cost for the city. Um, but, you know, it's subjective. You can have thoughts either way.
Thank you. All right. Any questions for the applicant? Any other questions for the administration? There none in all, in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
No.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
No.
Three yeas, three nays.
Yes. All right, motion carries, moving right along. Next person, next, next item, please. Next item, please. Go ahead, let's move right along. We don't have time to be messing, messing around.
Item C, consider approval of special land use for a proposed contractor's storage yard in the M one light industrial district.
So move, Chair. Support.
One.
Discussion. All right, discussion.
Okay, um, so we have a, an application here. Planning Commission reviewed this on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two and recommended approval for a special land use to council and also recommend, or, um, did approve a site plan for a contractor's storage yard. And you might be wondering why a contractor's storage yard is a special land use in the zoning ordinance. And I would say the zoning ordinance needs to be updated. This is, uh, somewhat simple, it is a simple project. And I think that we do need to, uh, make sure that we are paying attention where we allocate the, the category of special land use and making sure we're not overburdening our resources by having unnecessary processes that don't really need to see small, um, projects like this. Usually projects like this in other communities that we work within are just approved administratively because of their small footprint and small scale. So in already the, the light industrial district, the applicant proposes to create a contractor's storage yard. Um, we, planning department reviewed the project and, um, have some recommendations for the special land use. But we do ultimately offer, uh, a recommended approval. And the applicant, I believe, is here today to represent the project.
You want to come support? Sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, you guys have any questions for the applicant? Any other questions for the administration? You none in all, in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, sir. All right, moving right along, next item, please.
Consider approval of special land use for a proposed adult-use marijuana retail establishment and marijuana provisioning center in the B three general business district at two six two zero one Michigan Avenue.
What's your pleasure? Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I will support till we can go into, I will move till we can go into discussion. I said so, move into someone supports, we can go into discussion.
Oh, so.
We, we do, we all on, we good? You all good, okay. All right, discussion. Mara?
Okay, uh, again, the planning commission reviewed this applicant, or application on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, recommended approval to city council for a special land use and also approved the site plan for an adult-use marijuana retailer and the medical marijuana provisioning center located at two six two zero one Michigan Avenue. Currently, the site has a, a vacant building on the site. The applicant seeks to reuse that vacant building and then construct an additional two thousand forty-two square foot building for a total of about under five thousand square foot building. Um, the site zone in the B three district, marijuana uses are considered regional uses or regional commercial corridor uses. The staff finds that this use is harmonious to the B three district. And we've written our, uh, site plan or special use, uh, letter with a recommended approval. The applicant is here to represent their project.
Applicant, please, before.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, Counsel.
Evening. Questions, Counsel? For the administration or the applicant?
Mr. Mayor, vote.
Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman Watley?
No, I thought somebody else.
Okay, Councilwoman Washington?
Um, which, um, Councilwoman Watley, you go first.
That either back?
Um, I, I'm just trying to figure out, because like I said once again, maybe I just don't recall. But when did we uncap medical or provisionalary or whatever? When did we uncap that? Because we've always had a cap of three where that's concerned. And I can't recall if we've ever adopted or modified that cap of three. 'Cause I know that had to come before a vote or something or some sort of process. And I can't recall the process, so.
Do you have that information? I know that you gave that to all of us as it relates to how everything happened and panned out.
Right. Um, so planning department created a memo and we tried our best to collect all information as possible. Um, we see, we, we read the amendment to chapter one twenty-four and that's what you're talking about is the caps, uh, for medical marijuana licensing. And caps are part of chapter one twenty-four business license process. So I'm gonna put a pin in that really quickly. There's two, um, ordinances that monitor or regulate marijuana in the city of Inkster. And this is common for every city, it's either the zoning ordinance and then the business licensing ordinance. So these are the two ordinances that we're looking at today. Um, so chapter one twenty-four is our business license ordinance. And I saw that it was amended in September twenty twenty. I wasn't here for the conversation, um, but it was amended to remove the cap, uh, in September twenty twenty. And maybe the city attorney has further comment, but I do not.
Okay, does someone have a clean copy of that ordinance that we can see? 'Cause I've never got one.
David, can you speak to that?
I can forward a copy now. I have a copy of the ordinance. We also amended our ordinance to mirror the state as it referred to medical, adult use and things like that. Uh, but I can forward the amended ordinance that Mara was writing, it was in September of twenty twenty.
Well, that's the date I have too, but I can't recall ever, you know, uncapping three. Because there would be no reason to do it if we were trying to get the retail to, uh, align with the medical. You see what I'm saying? Remember when we were saying we would continue to only have three in the city if we paired the medical with the recreation?
I remember that discussion for sure.
Yes, yes. So I'm, I'm just trying to figure out when it went left.
Did you have some more? Okay. David, you send that to everybody?
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Okay, um, so planning department also created a latest ordinance page. So some ordinances have passed by city council but are not yet codified in American legal. Um, so we want them to still be out there and transparent for the community to see. So we have these ordinances already on the department website under the latest ordinance page. So you can, you can act, you can access it by going to the planning department website and look at these ordinances.
Good morning, Chair. Go ahead.
No.
Speaking to the mic, please, sir.
You know, if I'm, if I'm remembering correctly, I thought that we, we tried to, uh, zone it in a way that it would, I think David used the word organically weed itself down. So it would give it a natural cap instead of us just saying, okay, it was three.
Right.
You know, or it was two.
I remember that discussion for sure.
So it would only allow for so many in, in the zone, so. Now it's like a question of, you know, I thought it was four, that it would have just, you know, organically zoned itself to that.
It was six throughout the entire city as we, as we looked at it. Just because of this, even for this particular stretch that we talked about when you revert to middle belt, if I'm recalling, you could have one like on either side, you know, just because of the distance of a thousand feet. But that was during that time if I can remember, but. I know we do have the minutes, we can go through all that stuff, but I do recall that as well.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, that's, that was why that was, you know, wasn't like that. So that was my understanding that, you know, it should have shrunk itself and not leave, uh, a, a bigger footprint than what we, you know, anticipated.
That's correct, and it will. Are we going through this process? Okay. Any other questions, comments for either the administration or the applicant? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
No.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Um, Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Nay.
Dean Paul Williams?
Councilmember Williams?
Yes. All right, motion carries. Thank you, moving right along, thank you. All right, next item, please.
Next item is to consider.
Next item is to consider approval for three special land use permits for a proposed adult-use marijuana retail establishment, a proposed medical marijuana provisioning center, and a proposed drive-through restaurant in the B three general business district at two nine, two two five through two nine, two four five Michigan Avenue.
Let me just stop you right there. I know that we had before at planning commission, we had like, kind of like drawings of what proposed landscape is gonna look like. Is that not what we're doing tonight?
So the site plan was approved at the planning commission, um, and tonight you're referencing just the special land use, which isn't?
Okay, just speak, speak a little bit about it.
Is it uh related to the landscaping per se?
Yeah, the actual build, how the buildings will look so the general public can have an idea of what we're talking about.
Uh, the applicant is here tonight. I'm not sure if they brought any materials, but the site plans are also available if the public wants to reference those. However, uh, the special land use is really only speaking to the qualifications that we're looking at, that we've been talking about earlier in the evening.
Okay, that was just a question I had, okay? All right, I'm looking for a motion on that. Motion to, to go into discussion.
Support.
Is there a motion?
Oh, motion to go into uh into discussion.
Support. Support for discussion. All right. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Uh, so on Monday, May twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-two, the planning commission reviewed and recommended approval of the special land use for the medical marijuana provisioning center, the adult-use retail establishment, and the separate drive-through restaurant. I wanna be very explicit that the drive-through restaurant is a separate suite and not connected to the marijuana facility whatsoever. Uh, this is a site at two nine, two two five through two nine, two two four Michigan Avenue, which is on the corner of Middle Belt and Michigan on the southeastern uh corner.
Point of reference for the general public is the tire shop.
That's correct.
That's on the south side, west corner.
Yes, and the applicant is proposing to tear down that tire shop and construct a new forty-nine hundred square foot building with two suites and a drive-through that circulates off of uh Middle Belt and also has an exit onto Michigan Avenue. Uh, this is a general business district which permits uh marijuana operations and drive-through restaurants as special land uses. And we find that is uh compatible with the general business definitions.
Questions? Questions? Who is he from?
I remember at the planning commission meeting, um, it was asked, and I don't know at the time if anything has transpired from that point, but since we're at this spot, if the applicant had secured vendors for the drive-through restaurant yet?
All right, applicant, please, Ali.
We have a couple in mind.
Uh, sir, please step up to the podium, please, sir.
We are working with you.
Go ahead.
We are working with a couple of franchises, uh, one Mexican, one juice place, uh, in that uh we could put in there that would be compatible, that would be able to have Uber and uh delivery services, neighbors, and the, the apartments uh right down the street.
Well, I, I do remember that brief discussion now, and I know um a lot of times that's one of the main complaints regardless if it's anything uh dealing with cannabis or not, is if, why can't we have more restaurants in Inglewood or more things that would cater to our community for the betterment, so.
If I can answer that for you? I did put a property under contract down the street that's an acre. My intention is to put a grocery store over there, a retail store over there. If I can accumulate the corner parcel, I'll make it even bigger. I'm in this thing for the long haul. I'm in this for the whole city, the citizens, the city, and, and my family.
You made that commitment before us, and our residents will hold your feet to the fire.
Hold my feet to the fire. Listen, jobs, social justice program, involvement with the people, the community, helping them become homeowners. I got a plan, I got a vision. I've accomplished a lot in different neighborhoods throughout this city. I've done a lot here at the city of Inglewood, and I want you to hold me accountable. I want you to hold all of us accountable. But once they're given the opportunity, let us, you know, put forth benefits for everybody. I'm here to offer. I'm a little guy, I got lucky on a piece of property, I got a lot to offer. Let me show you what I have to offer. Yeah, I'm glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, that's all I have right now, Mr. Chair.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone else? Go ahead, Congress.
Oh, wait. But, does the applicant own some property already in the city of Inglewood?
Go ahead.
Uh, I do have a property under contract at two eight, four, three, seven, it's vacant land, okay? I just put that under contract. It's an acre, it's just east of uh, of Carrington. I am a land contractor over, along with my sister, for a property on Cherry Hill, uh, that next to the restaurant bar is a vacant parcel. It's often with the owner for the covering contract. Book for units, maybe we can fix it, but the city of Inglewood has location, has industrial property, it has commercial property, it has vacant land, airports, it's got some suburbs. We've got a lot to take advantage of. Lot of our businesses, lot of our residents and everything, they go outside of the city. Oh, I'm sorry. Most of the residents, they go outside of the city. Okay, we can change that. We have the land, we have the location, and we have a hell of a future. I was talking to the mayor before I found this property. I was bragging on Inglewood and its location and its possibilities and its underdevelopment way before I got lucky and I found that property. That property is a gift to me to share with everybody. Hold me accountable.
Councilwoman Williams, you had a question?
I was trying to find that grade. Uh, I think that, that grade, that grade, um, plan that we have, that, that's what he's talking about putting there?
Right, the one that you were saying that you didn't know if you were gonna be able to put that on that footprint?
I wanted to ask him a question. I don't know, I, I got it in here somewhere.
Mine probably is.
Okay, yeah, okay, that's the one that I had. Uh, question I had to ask you.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, now, that's, that's on the corner, okay? Are you running that building back towards Michigan Avenue? Are you going, are you going towards uh, uh, Middle Belt?
Aye.
Hold the drawing up.
My architect, please.
Speak into the mic, sir, please, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Fred.
Speak up for me, please. Thank you.
My name is Frederick Edos, I'm the architect for the project. Just like Ali said, the building is running on, parallel to Michigan Avenue?
That's on Michigan Avenue?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Turn it again to the audience. So did you, did I ask your question, sir?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
All right, go ahead, Congressman Joe.
He's gonna tear that down, build new construction, what have you, that property.
Go ahead, Jay, please, an- answer that question just so.
Yes, that's correct. It will uh host a similar footprint to the existing building. Um, so in terms of density and massing, it won't be a significant change. Um, and we find the setbacks uh on both Middle Belt and Michigan Avenue to be conducive to the streetscape in general.
So that, and, and not to, you know, I'm just trying to envision that. Did I see the tire shop there, right? How deep does that go back? Cause you know, you got the construct.
On the east side, you got a hundred and eighty-eight feet of depth.
Okay.
On the west side, you got two hundred feet of depth, and along the front edge of Michigan Avenue, you got a hundred and sixty-eight feet and three driveways, along with the one driveway on Middle Belt.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
So, so, Mr. Chair, I just have one. Now, just happenstance, he happens not to, to do anything with the property or, you know, build it as we see here tonight. Is there any other uh stipulations or any other amendments to this?
Well, go ahead, please, say God, I was about to say, but go ahead.
So the site plan approval requires uh them to build to these specifications. Any significant changes to the site plan that would represent this building not looking, you know, very, very similar to this would require the planning commission to reconsider the building? And if we found that it significantly changed to the point where it would affect this, the nature of the special land use, that would also change the special land use approval.
That's all, Mr. Chair.
Anything else? Any none all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Roll call, please, city clerk.
Councilmember Wiley?
Nay.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Nay.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
And Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
It's four yays and.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, next item, please.
The next item is to consider approval of special land use for a proposed adult-use marijuana retail establishment and medical marijuana provisioning center in the B three general business district at two nine, seven, zero, nine, Michigan Avenue.
What's your pleasure? What's your pleasure? What is it? We don't have them, F. We, we need a motion.
Oh, motion for discussion?
For, move the supporter properly. Discussion, please, Mark, go ahead.
Planning Commission reviewed and recommended approval for a special land use and also approved a site plan on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two for an adult-use marijuana retailer and medical marijuana provisioning center at two nine, seven, zero, nine Michigan Avenue. So the site is currently vacant. This is going to be a new build, so new construction. Uh, it's gonna be about a five thousand square foot masonry building, and it's within the B three general business district of the city. Staff reviewed the, the project, compared it to special land use. We recommend approval, and the applicant is here to discuss the project.
Please, applicant, please. I'm in a black.
Oh, it's a slippery podium.
All right, um, any questions for the administration? Any questions for the applicant? Show us your project, show us what you got going on.
Sure.
What you proposing?
Mr. Mayor, if I would just before, you know, one thing that I think is good, you're, first of all, we're all very grateful to be here tonight, and we're also extremely grateful to the community. Uh, a lot of these people were here on Monday, everybody, you know, waited, it was a long night, and here we are again. Um, personal note, I was absolutely amazed with what I saw. I, I spent the last eighteen years of my legal career going in front of city commissions, city counties, state governments and so forth, and what I saw on Monday was remarkable. I saw a community that was here that cared. I saw a city commission that was listening, that wanted to talk, that wanted to listen. I was absolutely amazed. And I'm telling you guys this from personal experience, I've gone in front of other city commissions that don't listen, they don't talk, they don't hear what people are saying, and you guys were, and I think that's fantastic. And so I, I really am grateful to, to be here tonight. Now, real quick, I do wanna introduce you who these people are, cause we, we got a lot of people sitting up here, and you're probably saying, who are these people? Uh, all the way to the right here, we have John McMullin. John McMullin is our builder, our designer, um, and he's gonna hold up here in just about a second our, uh, our pictures. One thing that I wanna emphasize to uh, to this city council is that you've heard some people come up here tonight talking about plans and talking about things in the future and so forth. We are prepared to break ground tomorrow as soon as we have the prepared paperwork necessary. We are ready to go to work tomorrow, no delay. The gentleman to my right, standing here, is Alan Markovitz. He's been a member of the Inglewood business community since nineteen ninety-seven. He is the owner of this particular piece of land. Um, for those of you that, that aren't familiar with his philanthropic, his uh contributions to the city of Inglewood, uh, we can certainly discuss those if anyone wants to, uh, but I believe that, uh, some of you are already familiar with the work he's done with the city. To my left, we have Fred Cap. Mr. Fred Cap is the owner of ultimately the business that is going to be in this beautiful facility, Casely Farms LLC. Now, something that I wanna talk about tonight that, for, I, I haven't heard anyone else talk about it, and I do wanna talk about it because I think it's very important. For you city council people, one thing that is absolutely essential for all these businesses that are coming before you is that they ultimately have to go to the state of Michigan to get their licenses. They have to go to the state of Michigan. They need to be vetted, they need to be, their lives, their wives' lives, their entire family's lives get buried, go, gone through. Now, I haven't heard anyone come up here tonight and say that they have their state approval. We do. We do. We've been working on this for two and a half years, and Mr. Cap has been through the wringer with the state of Michigan, and I come before this city council tonight, Mr. Cap comes before the city council with our letters indicating that the state of Michigan has approved Mr. Cap, has approved Casely Farms, the business that's gonna be going in. And I have the landowner and I have the builder here tonight saying, we're ready to dig tomorrow. We're ready to go. This isn't pipe dreams, this isn't expectations, this isn't, hey, guys, you know, maybe this will happen, maybe this won't. We're getting to work. If respectfully, this council approves us tonight, I can tell you that Mr. Cap will probably be tenting out in front of city hall tomorrow, waiting for his permit tomorrow morning. And I mean that. Two and a half years of planning, going through the state of Michigan, the actual qualification process, being approved, going through Mr. McMullin and the design work that he's come through, the bus, the, we actually had some incredible conversations with your planning commission, would ask for some revisions, which we happily did. We are going to make this building not some pipe dream. This is gonna be, John, please hold them up. They're gonna be absolutely spectacular, so spectacular in fact that what we're already doing is we're having conversations with franchisees from Jimmy John's, from uh Mike's, is it Mike's Subs? Not Mike's Subs, Jersey Subs, excuse me.
Jersey Subs.
There's, there's so many sub shops now that none of them can come up with a unique name, so that's all that, you know, I get confused. Now.
Is that what the retail is gonna be?
Yeah, we're gonna have John, actually, if you could please explain.
Yeah, yeah, so, fifty-one hundred square foot uh building, four thousand.
Now, have him come to the, he had to come to the mic, sir.
No, I'm coming up here. I'll, I'll tell you what, I'll hold for you. Okay. You point, I'll be your Van White, okay? Hi, everybody. Uh, yeah, so it's a fifty-one hundred square foot building, uh, four thousand of that would be the recreational provision center, and then the other thousand feet is for retail, which would be a tea shop, a coffee shop, tropical smoothies, something along those lines. And uh, the building is itself, um, beautiful features here with some glass awnings, uh, we have some uh wood siding that goes on there, and then along with uh the stucco uh for the rest of the building as well. So it'd be state of the art and of course, brand new. Is it upside down? Yep. Sorry about that. And obviously, the aerial view of the building, uh, and then some uh corner shots, some closeups here, you can see the awnings and uh.
Can you hear me?
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
So, yeah, as you can see here, we have the aerial view, we have uh the corner view that shows a close-up of the detail of the awnings as well as uh the different features on the building. And then also with the landscaping.
Let the community see.
So anyway, I'll hold them both up for you guys. But not too long, cause my arms are getting tired and I'm small.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Please, go ahead. Counselwoman Washington?
I know you had stated something about the retail. Is there any specific uh retail shops you are looking to put into retail?
Alan, please. That's Councilwoman, we've been speaking with uh Jersey Mike's, uh Starbucks, Jimmy John's, and along those lines. And we expect between the business that will be created here with provision center and the business next door, to be plenty of uh business for this retailer to do. for this retailer to do quite well. And I think it'll help enhance the area and the building as well.
Are you open to talking with anyone local? Like, for instance, if we wanted, if there was a local business that would like to go in there?
I was actually gonna get into that into one of my next points.
All right, go ahead.
And one of the things that actually we talked about, now, as I explained before, Mister Markowitz, he's been in this, uh, particular community for quite some time, and he actually knows a lot of the members of this community. And so he wanted to actually do something that was gonna be different, and he didn't just want to come in with a bunch of talk. And so what we actually did is, as the landlord, he made certain directives towards what's going to be Mister Cap, who ultimately the, uh, the operator of the business. And amongst the things that are going to be required, this is a requirements. Number one, we are going to reserve jobs for members of the city of Inglewood community. These will be jobs that will be first to city of Inglewood people. A resident can come in, we're talking about, not just, we're talking about security jobs, we're talking about management-level jobs, we're talking about all sorts of opportunities for members of this community. Those jobs will be guaranteed. Preferential treatment is what we're calling it. Number two, what Mister, what Mister Markowitz has decided to do to make it a requirement is that this business is going to donate one hundred thousand dollars, yes, I said one hundred thousand dollars, to the city of Inglewood Police and Fire Department per year. This is a commitment, it's in the lease, this is a commitment that we've decided to make because we know how important law enforcement and fire protection is to this community. But let's take it a step further. There are a lot of people in the city of Inglewood that are full-time police officers, that oftentimes they, uh, they take jobs on the outside, whether it be private security and malls, what have you. We're going a step further. If you are a city of Inglewood police officer, and you come to us, and you want to be involved in security at our facility, you will be first in line. So if you are a city of Inglewood police officer or law enforcement officer, and you want to be working security for us, you're at the head of the line. When you talk about, Mister Mayor, you, you talk about build-outs and attracting other people to this community, other businesses. I actually heard some of your constituents this past Monday night even talk about businesses leading to more business. That's what you want to see. Now, anyone can go and put up a building with four walls, and bang, say, okay, I got a, I got a building, I got a wall. If you look at what the plan is, and if you look at what, uh, our designer, um, what Mister Markowitz has envisioned for this building, this is something that when people drive by it down Michigan Avenue, they're gonna look at it and say, whoa, they're gonna say, what is that? That's cool. That looks good. So when those franchisees, Mister Mayor, and, uh, all of you respect the council people, are in, come through Inglewood, which a lot of them do, because I know a lot of people drive all over Michigan Avenue, what ends up happening is they're gonna drive by and say, wow, maybe we should open up a new, you know, franchise over there, or maybe we should build a new strip mall in that corner. This is what brings other businesses in. This is what brings in other money in. All of the gentlemen up here, we talked about coming before you, they all wanted to go up, and they wanted to talk for, you know, days on end, but I, I, I pulled the lucky straw, and I'm the lucky one to want to do it. They all wanted to thank you all. They wanted to thank the residents of Inglewood for this opportunity. They wanted to thank this committee and you, Mister Mayor, of course, for, for listening to them. And we, uh, are certainly open to any more questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments from council?
I mean, I just, Mister Shear, I just want to comment that, you know, I, I, you know, with the signage and how professional it's going to look, it's not gonna say, you know, a lot of these new builds, it's not gonna say marijuana or, you know, different things like that. We, we want the professionalism in the city of Inglewood, so that it doesn't even look like it's some type of, you know, you know, facility like that, that it can just be, you know, something unique.
Well, I think if you can see in the rendering, we just have as a provisional center, and the lettering and the wording will be very tastefully done.
Yes.
So it won't draw that kind of attention that you're concerned with.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's all I have to say.
No, no, no neon green flashy lights, I promise.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
Councilwoman Williams?
I, I got a serious problem. I'm looking at the drawings, and I just want to make sure, um, that the drawings, that the flight club's still gonna be there, too. I mean, I, I mean, you gotta, you gotta build it that looked like the flight club. I'm just trying to make sure the flight club's gonna also be there, too. You wanna answer that for me?
I believe the landlord agrees that it will stay.
All right.
If it's all right with everybody here, your honors.
My, my question, um, Alan, I appreciate you, you know, putting those conditions up. When you talk about the hundred thousand, what, what are we talking about? Are you talking about cutting the check? When?
Here's what we're gonna do. Um, it's in the lease.
Okay.
With Kessley Farms. That's part of the lease. He has to contribute. It'll be yearly, and we can work out the details in regards to monthly payments, which I would say would be recommended. So when he pays on time, the lease and the rent, that, that will go monthly to the city of Inglewood for you to use at your, at your pleasure. And I, by the way, I recommend, by the way, since this is a very privileged business, and we feel privileged that you're allowing us to come into the city, which I feel, by the way, I've been here twenty-five years, and we're talking about insiders and outsiders, and being here and watching the city grow, and it's the perception, the reality is, it's a very safe community. I've been here twenty-five years, and I've seen it get so much better, and with the current council and the mayor, it's just getting better and better. But in regards to this business, I recommend, and I think it's only right, especially people who are coming from the outside to Inglewood with this new business, that they should also contribute and equal what we're going to do, and that money can help this city grow. We have a very privileged license and a business, and I also suggest that the competitors also commit to that hundred thousand dollars a year.
That's what I'm talking about.
All right, any other questions? We got no more to that. All right, you hear nothing in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Nay.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
And Councilmember Wally?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Thank you all.
All right, next item, please.
I have no, Mister Mayor, Mister Cap will be camping out tonight, waiting for that permit.
All right, we'll, we'll see.
Item G.
Go ahead, please, uh, city clerk, item G.
Item G is to consider approval of three special land use permits for a proposed adult-use marijuana retail establishment, a proposed medical marijuana provision, provisioning center, and a proposed drive-through restaurant in the B3 general business district at two nine eight nine nine Michigan Avenue.
What's your pleasure? What's your pleasure?
Also for this, uh, motion to support discussion.
Support. Support. I mean, move it properly, support it, Mark, please.
Yeah, um...
We are still in session, just for the general audience, please. Go ahead, please.
Um, I also, can you hear me? I think...
Yeah, we can.
Okay.
Just yet.
Um, I just want to clarify, too, the previous applicant, um, we have to engage in a final site plan review. No one's getting a permit tomorrow. So I just wanted everyone to understand that no one's getting a permit tomorrow. The building department needs to get involved, or engineering's involved, so there's more items to discuss. Uh, I mean, someone go tell them. Oh, there you are.
I'm ready. I, I was pushing the tent, but I...
Okay, so, on July twenty-fifth, the planning commission reviewed and recommended approval for the special land use and also site plan for an adult-use marijuana retailer, a medical marijuana provisioning center, and a separate building with a drive-through restaurant located at two nine eight nine nine. The properties within the general business district, Zone B3, the project includes reusing an existing one thousand square foot building as a provisioning and adult-use retail center, and then also constructing an additional five thousand square foot building, and having some, um, an expansion onto the existing one thousand six hundred square foot building for the purpose of an expansion of the provisioning center, but then also the creation of non-marijuana general retail. So they'll, they're going to be creating non-marijuana, um, retail shelves of businesses as seen on the site plan. So four different storefronts that are non-marijuana related, and then a separate additional building on top of that as a drive-through restaurant. The planners reviewed the project and recommend the special land use approval to city council, uh, and the applicants are here to discuss their project.
Please, come forward. Just handing out the copies of the...
Tell him to give that to the clerk.
And, uh, come up, uh, Eric, to the mic and speak, please.
I'm on the air for the applicant entity. Uh, we are, uh, just handing out copies of the three D renderings of the site, uh, for your pleasure.
Give that to the clerk.
And we'll hold the three D renders as well to the audience, so they can see what we're proposing here. Thank you.
Go ahead. All right.
That's really supposed to start out with.
Any questions for the applicant?
So this, this, Mister, this gonna be a new construction here?
Yes. So Eric, speak to, you guys stay at the mic, sir, sorry.
Yes, so, speaking closer. There is a new construction. So this is existing parcel here that is existing, uh, this side right here.
Just a point of rip up for everybody. That's the Howard, uh, Robert Howard's old used car lot on Michigan Avenue.
Exactly.
Okay.
So this is the existing building. We're gonna reface and refinish the entire building. Uh, this is the new construction, five thousand square foot addition, and this is the, uh, third parcel with the, uh, restaurant, proposed restaurant, drive-through retail restaurant.
And what was the formal building for the drive-through? Where's that?
It's this building here.
Oh, that's that building, okay. So that, the new construction, the five thousand's gonna have retail space in it as well?
Yes, we actually already have, uh, we should be actually in lease shortly with Moody's Art, uh, for one of the shelves contingent on city approval, of course, and final development. Um, and we are...
For who is that?
Moody's Art.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, Samuel Moody.
Yeah, Moody's from Inglewood.
Moody's from Inglewood. In fact, his, his grandfather owned this property prior to Howard's used cars, so a bit of a legacy thing, uh, for him to be back in Inglewood. Uh, I guess one of Mr. Favorite's sons, you know, Sam very well.
I know Sam, yeah, good dude. He's international, too.
Exactly, international, but he's very happy to be back and have space in Inglewood for his operations as well.
Doing really well. I got a question. Go ahead, ladies first, Councilwoman Washington.
Okay. Um, just a quick question. Um, I see that there is four, um, retail spots?
Yes.
Are they there? Um, same question. So what would you be actually putting in those four retail shops? What is the vision?
So one of them, like we said, uh, we are ready to execute a lease contingent on, on final construction with Moody's Art LLC for his facility.
I can't, I'm sorry, I can't really do that.
Moody's, I'll speak up here. Do you, do you put your lawyer voice on?
I will, okay. So one of them is for Moody's Art LLC, uh, which is, he has a clothing brand, uh, very big clothing brand, sorry, I was trapping, very infamous all around the country, uh, and really around the world internationally. He's actually in Atlanta right now, uh, in the middle of, of a show, uh, which is why he couldn't be here today. He was here Monday, uh, to support, uh, as was, uh, Miss Murray from Ikey's Women's Group. Uh, neither of them could be here today due to scheduling conflicts. Um, this last site, so we were open to, we want to lease some of these other companies, Inglewood, Inglewood, uh, businesses. If, if there's residents here or in the audience that are looking for retail space, uh, we'd love to, to have you, uh, at our facility. Okay. Uh, the third, the separate parcel, our developer, Mister Yunus, has been working with one of the Savvy Sliders, next to that. Savvy Sliders, Happy's Pizza, Savvy Sliders, to try to get them into this facility, uh...
They've already committed contingent on...
Contingent on city approval. We believe that we can have them there, so, if you can, Mister Yunus.
If I may, so, yeah, I've talked to Savvy Sliders, Happy's owners, and, uh, they've committed contingent on city approval, so they will be there.
I got a question.
Go, go, I'm sorry.
We're drawing back around this way.
Go, go ahead. Your, your question satisfied, Councilwoman Washington?
Oh, yes, it was.
I'm sorry, I, I thought...
Go ahead, house of the weird. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. You, you were stating that that's, that's the, the old Howard building that you, you're gonna save that building?
The structure of the building. The structure of the building. So the whole thing's gonna be done outside, inside. The structure itself is, the structure is fine. There's nothing wrong with the actual structure of the building.
You sure?
It's gonna look like this when it's done, but the actual structure, the, you know, the, the beams, the, the exterior walls are safe. There's nothing wrong with that. That building's not even demolished and rebuilt. It needs exterior, exterior updates and interior updates, roofing, et cetera, and it's got major site work.
Major site work. So that feature, the water feature, I think that's when I was actually, planning commission, kind of going back and forth, is that the final drawing of it, is that how it's gonna look? And that's gonna be composed to Michigan Avenue?
Yes, this is right on Michigan Avenue against the sidewalk. We'll be redoing the sidewalk as well. I know you guys over there, that sidewalk is, it's, it's, it's falling apart, you know, so we're happy to be able to redo that. Come on, Mark, please.
Okay. Um, so I just want to be clear that we're not approving any of these renderings. The site plan has already been approved with the conditions listed for the planner's report by planning commission, and the site plan, uh, so there's some elements that are missing from this, like, uh, improved pedestrian walkway to get from this building to here. So there's some elements that are not represented, but the general concept of the building is represented in, uh, a professional fashion. Uh, the site plan's already been approved by planning commission.
Okay.
So we still have to go for engineering, obviously, um, and have them prove any permits, materials, et cetera, we're using, um, with everybody else.
And because that's so close to the Michigan State Trump line and those entryways, you're talking about actually cutting in another entryway with M-Dot. M-Dot would have to get involved, correct?
M-Dot would cut up, yeah, so there, M-Dot would have to cut this in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, uh, the blue part, you wanna explain that? And I mean, and, and you go on, that's what, what, what white part, that's the sidewalk?
Sidewalk, Michigan Avenue, right here.
The, the, the front part is a water feature.
It's a water feature in the front.
They have to have a rain, the retention basin, basically. Um, what the planning, uh, commission, of course, approved was to have a feature, water feature, versus just having a pond over to the side that's not maintained. That'll be, you know, something that will be attractive along that corridor, if approved.
Also proposing, uh, fountains in the pond to circulate the water also look, look much better. So, can you turn it around, please?
We have a question. Is this done in one phase? All one phase, or are we doing this in faith? You talk about that old building there, and you go let that stay there for a few years before we do some more?
Commission, commission. Because we supposed to did that at planning commission? And I understand that all of this stuff went through the planning commission, was in the newspaper for fifteen days before time. So when we come here now, as it relates to special land use, of course, the council was asking questions. Uh, out of respect in what it is, I definitely want to hear your questioning. I just don't want to have any dialogue going back and forth just because of the border of it. Yeah, 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 for sure. I got you. Okay? All right. So explain what's happening, so we're all on the same page. Because what, what we don't want to have, Eric, happen, and this is what we talked to, you know, pretty much all applicants, is that you're just selling us, uh, some smoke in the, in the, in the sky.
As I said, we're willing to bond. We're willing...
Explain.
We're willing to bond this, but, uh, this is a three-phase process.
What'd you say, what'd you say what you did?
We're willing to bond. We're willing to put up a bond. If you believe that we're not, you know, if you have concerns, uh, we're very much willing to put up a bond, uh, for completion of the three phases. Uh, what I propose is completion of phase, phase one immediately, um, and if you approve us here today, I mean, I would, my objective is to obtain permits, uh, for, and begin site work on phase two immediately. If I can get most of the site work on, this cut-in, uh, this year and foundational work, uh, if we're able to do that by November, before the frost falls back into effect, we can pick up phase two, uh, in the springtime and be done by, by the end of summer, by the end of summer next year, both phases. Um, with approval today, and based on the discussions with, with Savvy Sliders, I suspect that we can start the entire, the entire, uh, site work, subjects of their, their engineering as well. Um, relatively quickly, that said, this project is proposed at phase, is phase one by the end of the year, phase two by the end of next year, phase three within two years. Um, I, I wanna push that timeline up as soon as possible, because the more of this we build, the more this operational quicker, the more, the more money we can bring to the city, the more jobs. Uh, this facility proposed about forty jobs, uh, half of which we expected to give to local residents at least. Um, and that's just a dispensary. Now, the more, quicker we attract tenants to the sites, there are, after the two other sites that are, you know, not called... Now, the more, quicker we attract tenants to the sites, that are, after the two other sites that are, you know, not called for at this point, uh, the sooner we can have other, other jobs for the city there, other operators in this location. Um, so look, our objective is to build this out as soon as possible, um, at this point, special land use is standing in our way, uh, if we have your approval here today, you know, we are ready for engineering permits immediately.
Councilman Williams?
Okay, turn the drawing back around, cause I'm, I'm really confused, okay? You're saying in the front, that's gonna be like a little pool, am I correct?
No, no.
Okay, okay, cause see, I see you, I see you building like this. Okay, but on the other side, I, I see you got a, like a river running to the other building.
No.
Over here. See, you, you got, this is where you're gonna have things coming out the ground, right?
This, so this, this view is from this side, this view here is somewhere from this side, it's just the camera angle on the three D render. Uh, it's not a river, it is.
Okay, so now you're putting this here in front of the retail.
So this, what you see right here?
Where, where would the sidewalk be on Michigan Avenue?
Sidewalk's up here, you don't see on the side.
It won't be, it won't be sidewalk there?
This is the back of the building, what you're looking at here is this portion right here. What you're looking at in this picture over here?
Yeah.
Right, that's, that's this portion over here, right, that's finance for these businesses here. That they front onto this, uh, water feature, and then the water feature fronts onto sidewalk here, which you have right here.
Yeah, I guess I see what you're saying now.
It's just a different.
Different angle.
No, I, 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 I see that building, and I'm just saying this, I see that building over there running with the water, but over here, I see water running that way with the, with that bad building in the back.
Yeah, exactly, this, this, this is like the same building.
Yep.
Just this building.
That building, is that building back there?
This building here is the building right over here, so what you see in this picture here is a camera angle from right here.
So, so where that building's sitting at, where the Howard building's sitting at, you, you going back this way, right?
We're going forward. We're going west. Make sense?
I, I don't see, okay, go ahead.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant or administration? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Roll call, please, see the clerk.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Nay.
Councilmember Williams?
Abstain.
You can't abstain.
You have to vote yes or no. You have to vote yes or no, you can't abstain. No.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
No.
Mayor Wimberly?
Yes. Alright, motion carries, thank you guys, alright, here, right along, your vote, alright, next one, please. Item, item H, please. Now let's stay in order, we're almost done, guys, we're almost done. Getting close, yes ma'am, this is the last, this is the last marijuana league, alright, go ahead, please, read it into record.
Consider approval of special land use for a proposed adult use marijuana retail establishment in the B three general business district at three zero 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 seven Michigan Avenue.
What's your pleasure? For discussion, motion. So move.
Support, support, we'd probably support it.
Mar, please.
Planning commission reviewed and recommended approval for the special land use and site plan for an adult use marijuana retailer, just adult use marijuana retailer, at three zero 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 seven Michigan Avenue on May twenty third, twenty twenty two. Um, the applicant seeks to reuse or reoccupy an existing three thousand square foot building for the purpose of creating a marijuana retail, adult use retail business. The site is located in the B three general business district, and after assessing the special land use report, the planner has recommended approval of the special land use for the project site. The applicant is here to represent the project.
Please, applicant.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Jude Hamadi, and I'm the attorney handling the request of Green Inc. four twenties, um, request to approve the special land use permit. I'm here with Ali Ray Shuni, he's the architect, and, um, we wanna begin by thanking you all for giving us this opportunity and for considering us. We also wanna thank the audience for their patience, um, we know that, uh, they're taking time out of their busy days to be here with, to be here with us today, and we're really grateful for that. And we did also want to let everyone know that we are very dedicated to the city of Inxter and to Inxter residents. And we have actually, uh, prepared a very strong and robust, or we're in, we're in preparation right now of preparing a very strong and robust social equity program that we're, a social equity plan that we're submitting to the state of Michigan, um, when it's time to, to apply for our step, um, two, to complete our permit, or to complete our license, hopefully. Um, and in that social equity plan, uh, there will be, there's a lot of discussion on, um, providing priority to residents of the city of Inxter in addition to residents of other cities who have been disproportionately impacted by marijuana prohibition. But we will give priority to this, to the residents of Inxter before others. And, um, we also want to state that we're willing to answer any questions, um, anyone has, and we are very happy to be here.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant or the administration? Councilman Washington?
Yeah, do, do you guys have a wander around?
No, we didn't put together a plan or anything, usually I take those to the planning, uh, it's part of the planning commission, not the council. But I'm surprised that, yeah, I'm surprised that, uh, everyone came, came up with one, stuff like that for the council. I didn't, but I did put, uh, together the site plan that we got approved on, uh, at the planning commission, and some elevation to floor plans, uh, showing circulation and everything that was approved by, uh, by the planners of the city.
So this was the, um, the blue house on Michigan Avenue? That, um, it was going through the micro business process, and of course, we switched over to the retail process. Are you looking to, what are you looking to do with the building itself, are you looking to?
Yeah, we, I spoke with the owners, uh, we're, we're, I'm willing to put a design together in order to renovate the whole exterior of the building. Uh, we haven't come up with a design, we have some things in mind, but, um, uh, you, you'll be able to see that, uh, before we got permits and things like that, if you, if you would like to, you know.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
No, they, for sure, they wanna make it look, uh, as good, it's not better than the ones that you've seen. We're still, we're keeping the structure, but, but we're gonna be adding, uh, certain features like, uh, the stone, um, stone metal, and, uh, maybe some metal awnings that stick out in a certain way, in order to be decorative in a, in a certain way, to, to, to be shown like a, a strip center, but still, uh, uh, but not be occupied as a strip center, they just, they wanna use it strictly, as far as I know, um, they, um, as a dispensary. But you know, they might have, uh, from all the discussion that I've been hearing and things like that, the discussion that we could have with the owners, that they could add a certain, uh, business right next to the other dispensary, because they're not gonna need all that space. The reason why they purchased that building was to utilize that space and even add an addition, when they thought they were gonna put the growing, uh, facility in there. But, um, I think they should, uh, I think they should be adding something, maybe the owner could, uh, speak to that, uh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And the reason why we ended up, um, we ended up, uh, not pursuing the, uh, grow operation is because there is, uh, there, there are zoning restrictions. You generally cannot have a grow in the same, um, zone as a, uh, as a retailer, but we do intend on preserving the, the character of, of the, of the, of the building, um, while still renovating it to make it more aesthetically pleasing and, um, and making it, uh, appealable to the, to the general public. Um, and I did also want to specify that, I did wanna state that we are, um, already pre-qualified by the state of Michigan. Uh, there was discussion earlier on obtaining full approval. I did wanna state that in the state of Michigan, you're not allowed to obtain full approval until you've been approved by the municipality. So there are two steps, um, at the state level, there's pre-qualification, which is step one, and then there's step two, and that's when, um, you obtain the actual license itself and you get the full approval. So pre-qualification has to do with pre-qualifying, um, both the business and the individuals. So there's a, there's a very, um, robust, uh, um, background check that's done on both the business and on the individuals who are a part of the business. And that's the only thing that any applicant is allowed to complete before, um, standing in front of the, uh, the municipality to request, um, to request their approval. And then once, and only once they have that approval from the municipality, are they allowed to go back to the state and request, um, their step two be approved from the state of Michigan, from the, uh, cannabis regulatory agency.
I agree. Anything else? Anything to lose by? Go ahead, please.
Uh, so the applicant's mentioning some site repairs to the existing building, and one thing that is required that we mentioned in the special land use report is for the applicant to meet the thirty percent transparency requirement, to have a more active storefront for passersby. So that is something that they are also required to do and will change.
And we're more than willing to.
Any other questions, comments?
Are they, are they remodeling the existing building?
Yes, yes, and just what Mar said, that they have to add in, you know, like store, a storefront feel to it as well. That's the blue building.
Complete.
Councilman said he's gonna be remodeling. Councilman said he wanted a brand new building from the ground up. You got anything else, Thompson? Please?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any nays?
Nay.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Shaw?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Nay.
Councilman Will, Williams?
Nay.
Councilman Washington?
Nay.
Councilwoman Washington, no, okay, go ahead.
Councilwoman Wiley?
Nay.
Councilman Chisholm?
Yes. Motion fails, alright, move right along, sorry guys, let's move right along into item E, please, I mean, I'm sorry, item I.
Consider approval of the special land use request for an eleven person adult foster care group home at three zero four one John Daley.
Thank you, uh, we're bringing this special request, uh, back before you, as this was originally in front of council in March of twenty twenty, but no action was taken. Um, and as part of our process improvement in the planning department, we are trying to help Ms. Hamilton here, who is the applicant. Uh, she is proposing to establish an eleven person adult foster care at three zero four one John Daley. This is a single story, uh, building that was formerly a religious institution, and this will be a, a conversion and adult foster care is a special land use, but we feel is, uh, compliant with the zoning district.
Ms. Hamilton?
Good evening to everyone, mayor, city council, and everyone present. I'm Marianne Hamilton, I have been a provider since nineteen eighty nine, and I'm sorry, I'm so unfamiliar with some of the procedures here, so I don't know if it's acceptable that I show you the facilities that I have, I have one in Romulus, and I also have one in Morton. And I, as a provider, I am committed to providing not just for the residents, but to my employees and to the community that I am in. And that's the reason I brought my brochures.
You just hand them to the city clerk and then we'll get them to, to, to.
This is a facility I could, you probably won't hear me, from the ground up in Romulus, because, okay, thank you, these, that's one, and this is the other. Okay, one's in, one of the facilities is in Wayne, and one is in Romulus. And I have a very free in, uh, Romulus, because there's a need, the population I serve, uh, developing, I would say, is able. Love it in my wheelchair, and I know there was concern before about it being in the community, but they would not be in the community unexplored, because they're in wheelchairs. Okay, and, uh, so they would be accompanied by staff. I know I'm in wheelchairs, but the, the facility I have now, whenever they go in the community, they're supposed to help me. So I've got the brochures, so you can see, ones, like I said, one's in Romulus and one's in.
I'm sorry ma'am, I'm sorry, I had a bit of confusion, I apologize.
Now, I also wanna let you know that I will be paying taxes, I have a, a nice tax bill right now, over five thousand dollars. Uh, because I, as a, a provider, I lease the business to the AFC. But I'm the, I'm the licensee and the landlord, okay, and I pay taxes. And there would also be jobs for the people in the community, because, you know, in these COVID times, it's very difficult to get staff. And you're not gonna get people traveling from too far away anyway, to come to a job at a group home, I'm sorry, that's just the reality. So it would be jobs for the people in the community, and I'm committed to be a good member of the community. I'm from Romulus, born and raised there, so I'm committed to being a part of the community and providing services and not being like, uh, a burden on, you know, not working hardship on the, on the city.
Question? Go ahead, Councilman Washington?
Um, I know you had, uh, did mention.
Speak up a little bit louder.
Oh, sorry, I know you did mention, um, about, you know, AFC homes being, you know, us having issues in the past with AFC homes.
Yes.
Residents kinda just walk in or wander, so with your AFC, with, with your AFC homes, will you have barriers in regards to people who wander off or walk off? Or anything, cause I know you stated, you do have people that will be in wheelchairs as well, but will you have, like, do you have barriers in your homes?
Uh, barrier you mean is for them going out?
For those people who walk off, that wander off, and so they do this.
First of all, I, I find, the reason I picked this facility is because I want it to be barrier free. Of course, it would be for a company of people, you know, that are in wheelchairs, okay, because that's where there is a need in this, in the services for people that are in wheelchairs, you know what I'm saying, it's other group homes, but they, they're not barrier free. I have a barrier free in Wayne, and I could tell you, we don't have, we don't have a problem in the community, because first of all, I'm not gonna have people that are a problem in the community. And secondly, they're in wheelchairs, and when they go out, they're accompanied by staff. So they're not gonna be knocking on people's doors, you know, or whatever, that you might think, even with my, our facility, even they're not in, they, I just, I just don't have that problem. We, you know, we have rules, and, and the people that live there go, have to go by the rules, it's house rules. And I want to add one other thing to my architect, or my, not my architect, but my contractor, Mr. Jenkins, who, you know, is probably well known, Mr. Jim Jenkins, he did African American Museum, Greek Town, Greater Grace, a lot of things. So when we get through, when I get through with the building, and I would like to even, I envision trying to take some of that big parking lot and have grass, you know? We don't really need all that, uh, because it was the Jehovah Witness Kingdom Hall, you know, and it's got a large parking lot. But what I would like to do is take part of that and make it like, almost just like a park area, you know, for the people to sit out there and be able to, you know, uh, to be outside and afford to be a green area, cause we don't need all that parking, but of course, I need revenue for that.
Okay, Councilman Williams?
I just have one thing, I, I know that, I think that this is the one that we discussed about a year ago?
Yes.
And this is how, how, your district?
Yes.
Okay, and I just wonder why, when you, you know, you come tonight, you showing us the beautiful house that you have in Romulus and, and, but yet, you got nothing showing what you're gonna, how, how the place where you got now, the church, your whole witness church is gonna look like.
Well, you know, that's, that's a downfall on my part, because I realized with the people making the presentations tonight, that they had these nice posters and everything, and unfortunately, I don't do that, but I do have a very reputable contractor, Mr. Jenkins, and when we finish, it's gonna be nice, I mean, when he finishes, cause I mean, I don't know if you're familiar with it or not, but Jehovah Witness Kingdom Hall don't have windows in them. So like, we're in the process of doing, changing the whole building, you know what I'm saying? Outside, the outside exterior's gonna be changed, and the parking lot's gonna be changed, but I didn't bring any drawings or anything like that, and I think that's downfall on my part, but I can provide them to you.
Can you speak to that, Jane, just a little bit to help her?
Yeah, if I can add to that, the site plan was approved by the. Yeah, if I can add to that, the site plan was approved by the planning commission prior to your previous, uh, review of this special land use request. And the, Ms. Hamilton proposes to make significant landscaping and facade updates. So that is something that's already been considered by the planning commission. And, um, you can see the site plan in your packet. Those facade improvements and elevations were also included. They're very, uh, they're very compatible with what we're looking for in terms of street views, and, uh, I think you'd be happy to see those.
I understand, I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying is that, you know, I, I want to see, uh, that building, what it's going to look like when she's getting ready to go in there with the group home. Because see, we had a long issue about the group home of eight.
Right.
Okay, and then she's indicating that everybody she putting in now would be wheelchair?
wheelchair behind me, say.
Right, but not, not everybody in there be wheelchair.
No, not necessar- not necessar- I wouldn't say necessarily, but I'm, I'm, the reason I'm having, is building this building, developing this building, is specifically for people that require a barrier free facility.
Because I, I, um, had a lot of issues before with the same property, you know, and I was just.
Mr. Mike, towards person she's speaking. Go ahead.
If I can add one thing to that.
Please, go ahead.
This is a state regulated facility, uh, so there is state licensing procedure that Ms. Hamilton will have to comply with as well, uh, so that hopefully will alleviate some of your concerns of disruptive neighbors or, um, some sort of, you know, some of these issues that you're thinking about that have happened in the past, but I will let Ms. Hamilton speak to it.
I understand what you're saying, but what I was asking her was that the structure of the building that she have, what it's going to look like with eight people in there? Okay, I do know that you're with this church that you're talking about, okay? And what's on my mind right now, and I'm just saying it, you know, you got eight different people in there, living there, with that size building and stuff like that, what type of renovation is going to be done to, to, to meet their needs?
Well, I can tell you this, Mr. Jenkins is already, we were in the process of doing, of working, he was in the process of working there, and I can give you plans. And it's not going to, I'm not asking for eight, I'm asking for eleven, that's how large the facility is. And all private bedrooms, there's only one double bedroom, therapy room, you know, uh...
Because I think last time it was eight, right?
It was something like that, it was, it was, it was, I'm not, it, it might have been eight or nine.
I think you're thinking about the one up on Easter Road.
Easter Road?
No, no, the one on John Daly.
It was always eleven.
It's always eleven. Always eleven?
On John Daly.
But I have plans if you would.
We passed no action on it. When it came before us, we passed no action on it.
Okay, well, that's why we back again. Because nothing happened. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, sure.
Okay, um, I know this came before us a while ago, and I do know some of my residents did not want that, did not want it there, okay? Um, but looking at the property today, it looks a mess. Okay, and the fence is torn down, uh, weeds are growing everywhere, it's been debris in there, and I'm, I don't understand, if you own this property, you're not, you're not picking, you're not cleaning it up now. Well, I'm paying for someone to cut the grass, I'm paying for someone to cut the grass. The grass might be cut, but the fences, the fences is, are falling down. Uh, I rolled by at one time, uh, where if you put windows in there, that had been messed up, I'm not sure if anybody even hit, went in there and vandalized the building, but as of today, and when planning is doing this, I'm not sure if that's your job to go and look at the property, see what the properties are looking at right now, but it looks a mess. It really does.
I'm sorry, Jen, we've been on it.
I agree with you. Well, no, I'm just saying, so, I agree. Okay.
She knows.
I agree.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, that's all I have to say. But Bill, you know, the property has been vandalized, people have been using it as a dumping ground. I know. And I don't like that either, and that's the reason I'm trying to get, be more active, be proactive, get it fixed up, have it the way I would like it to be. Like, the fence is down, they knocked the fence down, they're throwing mattresses in there, you name it, it's in there. And if I can get approval from you, assure you, and start moving with this, it won't be like that. Okay. You know, there won't be a blight in the community, I want to enhance the community. I don't want to be a distraction, I want to enhance. Okay? That's my objective. Thank you.
Does she have something else, ma'am?
Just to, to speak to planning's role, uh, one of the reasons that Ms. Hamilton has been working with us is to correct that blighted issue. That blight is actually being taken care of through code enforcement and other departments, so we're just working with Ms. Hamilton on the future of the property.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Chisholm.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to get some history, um, we had a very long extensive talk about this property when it came up, and as, as well as other AFC homes that wanted to come to the city of Inglewood. Um, at one point in time, I know, uh, myself and Councilwoman Watley had called other communities to find out what legislation or ordinances or rules, regulations, whatever you want to call it, that they had on the books and no communities did, because the state of Michigan regulates this, or, I'm sorry, regulates AFC homes, cities don't have the governance to do so. So, a couple of things I want to advise the community to do in effort to ensure that your voice is heard at the state level, as well as the city level, is make sure you make those calls to Lansing. There is a House bill on the floor that was sponsored by a Republican to get cities more teeth to regulate AFC homes in their own communities, and its stated committee has not left. So you can call up to Lansing and inquire, call your state rep or your state senator, and inquire about that, because that is something that local governments wish to do. Now, we don't want to, uh, discriminate against persons who need to live in AFC homes, nor the owners or the applicants, but in an effort to give your city council and city government more regulations, we do need your help, because it's not in our hands. Unfortunately, we have more vacant properties than we have occupied properties, or, I'm sorry, more vacant properties than surrounding communities. So when you call these other communities, they only have two, three, four, five, six, when we have over sixty, and there's nothing we can do, and we, I hear you. I, I, I'm hearing my colleagues too, about this is not necessarily what we want in our community, but we're stuck. And what we end up doing is sitting down, talking with Attorney Jones about litigation, and he telling us what his opinions are, our best options on the back end. So I wanted to voice that to you guys, because, um, we had an extensive conversation when Mayor Wimbley called me, I looked through two years' worth of emails, looking at all these different notes as to, you know, what this is. But, um, I'm sorry, where we work with this and why it was just coming back before us. But a question I do have to the applicant, because of the concerns that our residents have, when your residents leave the property and they're out all day, I've actually gotten a call from my barber one time about a guy who was just laying out in the field, walking all around barefoot and everything, and I called the front desk of our PD. Fortunately, because they had handled this resident before, they knew exactly where he lived, they took him home, I assume they had a stern talking with the management on the grounds, and I haven't seen that person back out roaming the streets. But in the event that does happen, um, what are your efforts in preventing that? And what do you, what is your plan of action? So if something like that happens, you know about it, or you can touch base with your staff before any one of us get a call or the PD gets a call?
Well, I, I, I pride myself on trying to, you know, like, be self-reporting, okay? If we have a, if I have a problem, I try to correct it myself. But if, th- these, you know, it is their home. But I'm just trying to, to let you know that I, like I said, I've been doing this since nineteen eighty-nine. If somebody is a problem in the community, a problem in the home, there's such a thing as a twenty-four hour emergency discharge, okay? They're out, okay? I just, certain things, you don't, you know, you know, I just, you, you can't tolerate it. I've had the county even tell me, well, Ms. Hamilton, we're supposed to be working with the person. I say, yeah, but I have to be a good member of the community, it's not just, I'm working with the person, but I also have to be a good member of the community. And so if it's a person that's going to be a problem in the community, I give them notice. There's a thirty day and there's a twenty-four hour emergency discharge, okay? And they can go.
All right, because that's, that's really, a lot of the main concern is when, um, the property is one, like my colleague said, dilapidated, or persons get out and about, and it just going all throughout the neighborhoods, and it seems like the persons that are working on site don't care, and then that falls back on the owner, and then we're looking at, okay, what are our options here? Which is call nine one one or call the police or fire, which drains our resources that the taxpayers are paying for.
I wish I could have brought you maybe some letters from Barton or some of the other people in Romulus or in Wayne, where I have homes, where the police say that, Ms. Hamilton, you're providing a service in the community, and we can be there in three minutes, because I've been there since eighty-nine, and they know the type of facility I operate.
Okay.
Sorry, that's just the reality of it. And, and.
And not to labor this any too much longer, but I just want to make sure that we're, you're saying this on the record too, we are making an assertive effort through the chief of police and, and his efforts as it relates to identifying, um, homes that are problematic within the, the community. However, adult foster care is different than the independent living homes that's happening in, in the city, because it's a lot of independent living homes where they're saying, okay, under a certain amount of people, they can just move in and they can regulate themselves, and there's no staff there. And that's what's been happening. So you've been getting people that's been buying property in the city of Inglewood for the law, right?
I got a couple.
And then turning them into these independent living facilities, and people are being put in there, and then their, the landlords are taking their checks, because now that they're living there, now their checks come to that address and stuff like that. So we know that that's happening, um, but it's, again, they're operating under what you were talking about earlier, Councilman Chisholm, about that, that rule at the state level. So we know that, we're, we're working to make sure that, that, where, that they have a certificate of occupancies, looking at, you know, even changing our ordinance so they can actually have home-based business licenses. So those are things that the administration is definitely currently working on to bring before this body as it relates to, uh, putting some teeth to what we can do, because currently, um, it's just, it hasn't happened. And that's where you get that, that sixty number. So adult foster cares in the city of Inglewood, I believe it's only two or three. And then you got group homes too, that's a difference. So then you got like twenty or so of those, but then you have all of these independent living homes. You follow what I'm saying? Yeah, so we just need to, as a council, you know, as we talk about legislation, you know, looking at our ordinances and updating those, so we can have those teeth to fight wherever we can, because we know that some things are state regulated and they're out of our hands. And this, it's kind of one of them, to be honest. All right. Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Enaise?
Nay.
Roll call, please, city clerk.
Councilman Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
No.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Washington?
Yes.
Councilwoman Watley?
Nay.
Councilman Chisholm?
Yes.
Three aces, two aces.
Four, four aces, two days.
Three aces, two aces.
All right, cool, then motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you, and you are. Trust me, I'm going to.
All right. Hold you to that. All right. One last item for business, please. Item J.
Um, consideration for a special event on Saturday, August twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two. At the recreational.
Yeah, and I don't see, um, Velma Overman here, she did mention about, uh, this particular, um, event happening, if we can put it on this agenda, for them to be able to close the block over there at, uh, Henry Street. Some movement, sir. Is there support?
What?
Move properly, supported, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Enaise? All right, ayes, seven, motion carries. All right, I s- I noticed that you don't have on here, um, comments from the council, but you do have public. Is it just because of special meaning? All right, then, all right, guys, we do have our last item, um, public participation, we ask that you approach the mic, state your name for the record, we'll give you three minutes to speak, just asking that, of course, you be respectful of that time. Craig Ellis?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Mayor, I'd also like to say, Mayor, you've been doing a wonderful job in this city.
Thank you, sir.
I've been here fifty-seven years, and I think you're probably about the best mayor we ever had.
Oh, man, cut it out, thank you, I appreciate that.
I don't even want to thank you, I'm sure you know. Raise a hand and agree with that.
I appreciate that, sir.
You've been doing an excellent job in this city.
Thank you, sir.
I love it, keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
My gripe is, I've been here like forty-five years, my dad had a Greyhound bus company here. He was one of the first black that had a Greyhound bus company, right here at thirty-two fifty-five minute bell. They sent me a letter some years ago, wasn't too long ago, that qualified me for, in the zone for the marijuana. So when I was proceeding with it, uh, coming to find out, they, they, they took me out of the zone. So I was just trying to figure out why I was out of the zone, uh, because I was one of the first ones that was supposed to be in the zone. I was took out for, I don't know why.
Are you talking about your property, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, um. I, I'm seeing all these new guys here, just opening up businesses and had businesses here, but I've been here forty, fifty-seven years, and I mean, I'm a real citizen of Inglewood. I do job, I do police work, I do ambulance work, I do it all, for free. Why? Because I love this city, I die for this city. These kids that be around here clowning and acting a fool with these guns and stuff, I mentor them. I talked to a guy the other day, I, he, he right, walking around with a gun, want to shoot somebody. And then when you, you, you going to jail, you just had a son. I'm, I'm just making it a long story short, man, we, we have to stick together here. These new people, has these businesses, they don't feel Inglewood like I feel Inglewood. That's all I'm saying. And, and what are they going to do for Inglewood to, to, to try to help other people that's trying to do businesses like me? I'm trying to do a business, I've been there forty-five, almost fifty years, I didn't, uh, uh, equity, uh, uh, all of that, I didn't, I didn't apply and, and all of that, I didn't heard back from them, but I haven't heard back from them. But my thing is, I just want to know what these new groups are going to do as far as helping other people that's trying to do something, that's, I'm trying to open up my, I'm trying to get my place together. I'm sitting on twenty-four, twenty-five thousand square feet, I'm trying to get some help. You know, what are they going to do? You know, cut me in on something, whatever I got to do, I'll do it, it ain't, I ain't got no problem with none of that. You know, I'm not just speaking for me, I'm speaking for the whole, a, a lot of people that's scared to come up here and talk. You know, we all was talking at one time, and everybody was supposed to want to come up here and speak their mind, but they scared to do it. So I'm going to speak for them, you know? Lot of people been in this city a long time and, and, and really want to see this city moving. And if we can get any kind of help we can from, from any of these cats that's, that's, that's new, because a lot of them don't even know what Vicksburg and Irene is. You know what I'm saying? But, but the, the, the people that's been here for a duration, I'm just trying to, trying to get some help here, uh, and seeing, you know, what these guys just, just been approved for all this stuff, what are they really going to do for the city? Is they going to do something for the city? Is they going to help some of the citizens? You know, is it, what, what are they going to do? You know what I'm saying? Is they going to get some people involved, minorities involved in what they're doing? Or try to get some of these minorities that is trying to get off the ground with their own small businesses, is they going to try to help them do that? You know, what are they going to do?
I appreciate that, sir, and that's obviously, that's unfortunate, it's your time.
Yep.
But we're definitely going to follow up, and we'll have some thorough discussions and that, um, as it relates to this, because.
All right, thanks.
It's an ongoing effort as it relates to education, as it relates to this, okay?
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Please, ma'am. Uh, hey, uh, come, come, come back against, the councilwoman wanted to address you, sir.
Then you let the gentleman know, you can stay over there at the podium.
Yeah, just stay right at the podium, she will.
The council had a moratorium, so that local people could get involved in the micro businesses. But they had to have a partner for that. And the ordinance is written so strange until fifty-one percent goes to the local ownership. So that's something that needs to be directed. That's the whole reason a moratorium is on now, to give the micro businesses a chance to this kind of the uh effort. So you may want to give this administration or whatever, after this, to inquire about the steps you need to take or find that there's someone still interested in the micro business.
Turn your mic on, ma'am.
Oh, someone who do a micro business who's interested in partnering with a local person. Because that's part of the micro business. You have to partner with a local entity. So look into that if you're truly interested in doing something of that nature.
There she goes.
I sure will. I sure will.
Okay.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Shirley Ankersen? Wait for her to come up. Shirley, you coming this time? Okay. I just didn't want to put your time on. Getting up here. Want to go to the next person? All right.
Mayor and council and citizens of Inglewood. Um, what the young man was saying is is absolutely true. Um, he should have an opportunity to have a mic, to partner with some of these big businesses that are trying to come in and and have these metal, mineral, these provision centers. They don't say marijuana dispensaries anymore. They they're called provision centers. So yes, someone should partner with him. He's done his time. He's been here most of his life and he needs a, he needs a hand and a lift up. And that's what the community would like to see for everyone in our city. And you know that because a lot of your friends and family are sitting right here and that's what they want. One of them spoke on Monday and said the same thing. But that as well as um it's it's just that it don't make sense to have all these people coming in here like this and we don't have the opportunity to to participate. All right, and you know we don't need that many. We have three right now. You want to reopen yours? That would give us four on Michigan Avenue almost? No, three on Michigan Avenue and one on 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 Middle Bell.
I'm just trying to wonder why you always direct your comments to.
Because I'm speaking to you as our representative.
To me right now.
Right. You want me to just, what do you want me to do?
I'm just saying, you 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 trying to, you always try to single me out like I'm just.
You're the, you're 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 the leader.
Go ahead.
You're our mayor.
Go ahead.
You don't want me to speak for you?
Well, go ahead. I'm listening.
You had the first dispensary here in Inglewood. I testified for you.
You did.
Okay, so don't act like we don't have a relationship because we do. You asked me to testify. All right, because you, you left council, you left council to open up the first marijuana dispensary.
I didn't leave council because of that reason.
Anyway.
Yeah, anyway.
You did leave council to to have, open up the first marijuana dispensary and
That's not the truth.
You were very successful at it for a long period of time.
Though I didn't leave council for that reason.
It ain't about that. It's it's about what our city needs, okay? And you know what it's like to be an owner. And you should be trying to help the citizens here in Inglewood as well. And there's no reason for us to have, and if if everybody completes the their marijuana dispensaries that you've approved tonight, we'll have at least nine. And we don't have a downtown development.
Said that already.
We don't have a downtown development to support something like that. And and if you were thinking about doing this or had or even the council, we you should have had a a a town hall meeting with with the citizens to let them know, so no one would would have been surprised when this happened. All right, because you've never had a state of the city address to address any issue.
I understand this is all about me, but go ahead, finish what you got to say. You got a few more seconds. I'm listening.
Well, if you would be quiet, I could, I would be done by now, if you don't mind.
Yeah, you don't want me to say anything to what you got to say.
It don't matter. It really don't matter. Because you know you've never had a state of the city dress. We don't know what your plans are. You don't know what our city wants or needs. I mean, so so what do you expect from the citizens? Yes, they're upset up over this. They should be. And I am too, because it's not fair. Because we need other things besides marijuana dispensaries.
All right, next person is Jesse Shelby, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good evening.
And council.
Good evening.
I went home after Monday night session council meeting. And you canceled from A to I. And I went back to my notes of twenty fourteen and saw where we as citizens sit in this room before you as mayor and the previous mayor, citizens, and discuss before we had got any of these marijuana places in this city. And it says that we could only have three of the medical marijuana places. But it's not no limit to the others in the industrial area for the city of Inglewood. So is Michigan Avenue industrial?
No.
Well, how come all of these that tonight you gave applications to? And and in my notes that I have that the city passed on, no limits in industrial area, but I didn't think Michigan Avenue was the industrial area. So what happened to downtown Inglewood? You don't carry over from the last administration. We have plans for the city hall, the police department and all of that to be torn down. And that part of Michigan Avenue supposed to be developed. So when people pass through Inglewood, they will see something. I even have the pictures of the plans. So what happened?
They were just pictures.
Huh? Yes, we have. City, the city, it was all in the paper how the city was going to look in that area.
Yeah.
City, old city hall, the library, the police department, all that area.
Oh, they were beautiful pictures.
Yes.
Yes, but they were just pictures, not plans.
No, it was a plan because I was on the committee that we we as citizens have worked on this. By twenty twenty, we supposed to have a development. It didn't say who was going to be mayor and council. This is what we as citizens wanted to have done. Develop Michigan Avenue for the downtown so it won't be people just drive through. We drive down Michigan Avenue. Now you have a marijuana place. We can hardly get through. And it's open all day long. You know the one on Michigan Avenue I'm talking about? Now you're talking about having drive-through. The lady wanted to have a group home. You questioned her on I more than you did the people up here wanting the marijuana joints. They didn't have pictures. All of them didn't have pictures. Because I may go to that nursing home soon. Because at age eighty-six, I can't take this anymore when the city is looking the way it looking. And we as citizens have worked for years to develop downtown Inglewood. We got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to develop uh um theater for Michigan Avenue, where that money went. And that supposed to been the drawing card for the downtown area. And we do have it and it should be at city hall, those designs. We citizens sit here in twenty fourteen and talked about all of this and what we wanted and what we didn't want with the marijuana places. And now it all have changed and the night you approve of six. I want to know when all them applications came in. As a citizen, we have asked each one to donate something. Like our pool at the complex, what the program we have for the kids at Booker Dozier Complex that they gonna pay for. Give us some money for these kids to go in the complex. Give us some money for that senior citizen building from these marijuana joints that's gonna be built. I know you don't approve of them. I'm asking as a citizen for all of you to donate some money to us. From the money we gonna get, we non-profits gonna come together and I'm coming to you. I got one of your at phone numbers already. And I'm coming to get the rest of you. And we gonna ask you for some of this money you get. You approve tonight and I sit here and saw it. And we coming to get some of this money for these kids.
Yes, ma'am.
Because only one that said they gonna do something was one company said they gonna do something for Inglewood. Nobody else said they gonna give us one penny. The pool need fixing.
Yes, ma'am.
At Booker Dozier. Get some money from them for when they, you don't okay the application? Get some of that money they gonna get to fix that pool. We building a senior citizen building. Get some money so they can close that pool overhead so we seniors gonna have to go to Romulus to get some exercise in a pool.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, all of these six people, give us some money to fix up Booker Dozier. Okay? I'm not kidding.
I know.
Whether you the mayor or you the council.
Yes, ma'am.
All of these people gonna be here when you gone.
Yes, ma'am.
When I'm gone. But what they gonna need for the next generation? Nothing but some marijuana ju- drive-in through joints. And we don't even have a school.
That's your turn. All right, Anthony Anderson?
Citizens of Inglewood, uh my name is Anthony Anderson.
Please, 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 please. Go ahead, Ms. Anderson.
My name is Anthony Anderson. I'm a local business here in Inglewood. It's called Get Your Life Entertainment. I think sometimes what we all need to do is stop the perception of marijuana because it's a lot of things that comes with marijuana. Uh, I can say that, uh, like as you can see, my logo represents marijuana, but it has nothing to do with marijuana. I'm an English language company. I do three sixty photo booths, I do uh selfie photo booths, I do tables, chairs, I have more parties. I'm using the logo as a perception. What what's, what things they have going on now is the marijuana business has become bigger than just a plant. I also have a clothing company. It has nothing to do, it's called Strands and Strands. It has nothing to do exactly with the actual weed itself. It's a hemp clothing line. It's made from hemp. It's made from the marijuana. Um. So I think we need to start to think about the monetary value of it outside of the flower, outside of the illegal part, outside of what it used to be. Because, you know, like we, I think we're stuck in the the old thinking of marijuana. And I think we need to, you know, such as like, you know, the if Anheuser-Busch was to want to come here, you guys would be okay with it, you know? I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a factory that you you were probably okay before you okay for marijuana, but at one time, it was illegal. Sooner or later, marijuana is gonna be like a cigarette. You're gonna have to deal with it just like you deal with cigarettes. You're gonna have to deal with it just like you have to deal with uh beer, like you do with your wine. Some of you gonna go home and drink a glass of wine right after this. So, um, we need to think of the marijuana business as monetary and don't think of it as illegal or just like it's gonna do something to some of this property that's been bearing land for uh thirty, thirty years. I I it's some four corners on Inglewood that's hasn't had anything on it the whole time I've been here. I own properties here. I've been here for over thirty years. I've owned several properties. I've sold properties. I've had several businesses here in Inglewood. I give parties here in Inglewood. I'm a part of uh, I I hire people here in Inglewood. I I I employ some of your cousins, some of your nieces, some of your nephews. Any business that goes on in Inglewood, I have supported it. And I think sometimes, I think us as people, we have to get away from the stigmatism of the marijuana and get to the monetary value of the marijuana. Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
Good evening, family.
Good evening.
Family, you know, the one guy, no doubt. I I I want to speak on mainly our Goodfellow organization. Uh, you know, and you know, we, you know, we we talk about, there's so much small things we can do in our community, help, you know, like the Goodfellas. And we got like at-school program like We Rise. We got uh uh seniors and all that. But you know, we got a, you know, the little that we do here and there and all that by the multitude and all that can make Inglewood a a better place. And I try to do my best to do that and let God do the rest. Well, okay, uh, our Goodfellow organization, we having a dinner sale, okay, this Friday. And uh that's raised some money for kids for Christmas, of course. And uh it's gonna be at the
Okay.
Okay, uh, uh National Christmas uh Center right there on 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 uh three six four Walnut Street. This Friday, we're gonna start at, okay, uh eleven o'clock to four o'clock. Uh uh twelve, twelve bucks for the chicken dinner and fourteen dollars for, you know. So come on out. You you know, y'all know, half your folks know the world about, don't don't live in, but y'all, in Inglewood today, come to Inglewood Friday and buy some uh some uh dinners for the kids. Okay, like I say, write, write, write this address down. That's three six four zero Walnut Street. That's right on the car, you know, corner Wal- uh Walnut and and Carlisle.
What time is it gonna start?
Uh 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 starting at eleven o'clock, eleven to.
Eleven A M. All right.
Right, okay, help, help us out. And and I always say this, you know, that, you know, the little things that we can do to help one another, you know, and the multitude of millions. Uh, always try to, you know, be able to take care of yourself and 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 somebody else and help somebody else, you know. This what, this what, you know, to be, that what they call the Good Samaritan and those who are really needing all that, help them along. And uh Inglewood used to do a whole lot of that back then, you know. And I may, and sometime I think about Mr. John Johnson, you know, all the things he did. He's a councilman and all that. I gotta go check on him. He's a, he's a very helpful person and all that there. And like Mr. Mr. uh Mr. Williams' father and all that and a few other, you know, great, you know, men that's passed along and how they used to help and do things, you know, I said, we need more of that, you know. So uh just thank you for letting me say something. And that's about it.
Thank you, sir.
Bring back our schools. We, that's we need, definitely.
Working on that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We gotta, gotta get our schools. We need a a school here in the city of Inglewood that we can, our kids get a diploma and say, yeah, I graduated from a school in Inglewood. I got my diploma. Instead of getting a a a a, you know, a certificate, pole dance, pole dance from one of these old strip clubs.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Robb, Antonio Robb?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council and the city.
It's an evening.
I was, my hope that I was able to address those.
Speaking to the mic, Mr. Robb. Okay.
It was my hopes that I was able to get up here and address the gentleman that left who was all approved for the situation in Inglewood about inclusiveness and 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 um including individuals in Inglewood. Yeah, 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 yeah. And I understand too. But, you know, uh, on on my end, and for people might see this on a meeting or whatever, you know, I mean, there's some individuals out here, like three of them who came up, who was approved the social equity program, even though this is on another note since two thousand and nineteen, but we, the ball got dropped through COVID and different things like that, you know. We would just like to know some kind of way, you know, uh that we can find some inclusiveness all together. It don't have to be separated. Uh, all of us, just maybe we can combine together and somebody team up with us and help us get our thing going, just somebody in the city. It don't have to be me. It don't have to be him. Just either one of us. Just help us get our thing together since y'all got the whole thing all figured out.
Thank you. All right. Call for German. I mean, did you guys saw?
I had some.
Okay, I know that I didn't have it on the agenda, so I don't wanna.
Okay, real quick.
Go ahead.
Appreciate it. We had a parliamentary uh procedure training on September twelfth right here in city council chambers. For those of you who weren't here on Monday night, it is a joint training, so everybody is welcome. Um, also, I lost myself. Uh, I will send that stuff in email, but Mr. Mayor, um, we did pass a lot tonight in regards to cannabis. And so I would like to spearhead a steering or cell committee on cannabis. And that would be something that would work on amending the zoning ordinance, the residential distances on buffers, updating and or enhancing the present marijuana business license. Uh, just because, like someone said, we had three in place already. We didn't get six passed tonight, only five passed tonight because one failed, but that's over a span of six point two square miles in addition to whatever else might be in the pipeline. And we do need to regulate it. And again, I would like to spearhead that that committee or subcommittee um before it goes to planning and then before that comes to city council. That way we can have a full thorough weigh-in or buy-in on it and it's clear and cut because it just seems like we got a lot going on right now and we need to get a handle on it before we go any further. And that's all while this moratorium is in place. And I will send the email out to the clerk's office, attorney's office, and the planning department. And that's all while this moratorium is in place, and I will send the email out to the clerk's office, attorney's office, and the planning department to get an interpretation from everybody on what they think the moratorium is, cause it seem like there's a lot of confusion in different, different departments and what council thought the moratorium was. And it just seems like we all need to get on one accord. So, um, I will follow up with you guys an email, but I did wanna put that out there for the record, so we can develop some type of policy and stuff, because this race to the finish isn't good for us.
Nope, not at all.
Talking about that since you talking, they're talking about the meeting tomorrow too.
Oh, it is special meeting tomorrow for the def- uh.
Deficit Elimination Plan, tomorrow at six. But you all gonna have an opportunity to speak, so.
Uh.
You all, anybody else wants to?
No, cause we, we ain't on the agenda, it's like.
Well, no, no, I mean, I'm saying it wasn't on the agenda, but you are a council.
Uh, that's enough talking done tonight.
I'll stay watching.
I mean, I definitely, you know, uh, agree with, uh, Akali in regards to that, that we definitely have to do some actual editing or something to that ordinance. And I was gonna bring up some, uh, this question, and you, and, I mean, I can actually try to bring this conversation, and maybe the attorney can't answer this. But with editing, could we add it with the ordinance a social equity piece to the new, like, when the, uh, when the marijuana, uh, I guess when the moratorium is actually finished, if we, if it actually comes back and let's just say we don't actually extend it, can we actually add it, edit, edit the ordinance to add a social equity piece to the ordinance that we introduced maybe what, a year ago, two years ago?
The answer is, yes, the state has already had it, there, on social equity part in here, and our ordinance is has was revised to include everything to be harmonious with the state statute. So you have to be careful, there's a lot of litigation right now, um, in other municipalities with regard to, you know, how they try to set aside ownership for local owners, and Detroit had a lot of litigation regarding preferred license for residents and things like that, but there, there is a social equity piece. But, you know, in many its form, as memberships is recommended, that certainly could be addressed.
Okay, so it can be done, pretty much. Okay, that, pretty much that's all I have, more of a question than anything, yeah.
All right, I'm sure you got anything?
No, sir, I mean, it's, it's good, like.
All right then, call for German.
Motion to adjourn.
What?
For, all the papers say aye? Aye.
All of whom say they can stay. Being adjourned, you guys are on six. Tomorrow at six.
Six thirty.